So Jody, I saved my presentation under the council meeting, but I didn't see a presentation file. Just FYI.
Oh, yeah, I haven't created it yet. Thank you for reminding me.
All right, looks like we're waiting for a couple more people.
I'm going to mute some folks so that we don't have everybody talking over each other during the flag salute.
Thank you. Still waiting on a couple of council members here.
Bless you.
Thank you. The creaky old air conditioner in my room, you never know what kind of allergens it's going to bring in.
Actually, my mother, that isn't the wet state, they used to say, they'd say, could see. Got me.
Are we, do we have everyone? It's hard for me to tell, Jody, because for some reason it keeps.
We're still missing Councilmember Napland unless I'm just missing her on my screen. I'm not seeing her.
All right, I'll give about thirty more seconds and then we'll get this meeting moving. So we've got a very full agenda.
I have, you know, I had to invest in a chair that was over a thousand dollars. So I could sit in these meetings for as long as I sit in these meetings. I mean, I'm at the point where I think I'm getting bed sores here.
All right, with that, I think it's been thirty seconds. So I'm going to call the City of Duval Council Meeting of July twentieth, twenty twenty one to order. At seven PM. Would you please join me for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Bridenicki.
Here.
Councilmember Shaffer.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Sorry, I missed you. Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Napland. Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. And under additions or corrections to the agenda, please add payroll for July twentieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars and ten cents. Claims for July second, twenty twenty one through July twentieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of three hundred forty two thousand, three hundred and thirty four dollars and eight cents. And we did have a request from a council member to remove Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy four A consultant services contract from the consent agenda. So I'll place that as item number one on the unfinished business. And with that, are there any council members that would like to speak this evening? Councilmember Shaffer?
Yeah, I did attend a update.
Wait, Councilmember Shaffer, not yet. We're just, we're just getting you on the agenda.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you.
No problem. I'll just write that in here. All right, anyone else that wants to speak? Councilmember Hoag. All right. All right, with that. Oh, I didn't see your hand. Thank you, Dot. Councilmember Lengel. All right. With that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Second chief.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
There, we have to do the motion to suspend rules.
Well, I'm sorry, suspend the rules. Thank you. It wasn't on, oh, it is on my sheet. Do we have a motion to suspend council procedures in order to approve the consent agenda? And Councilmember Napland, your item has already been removed from consent.
I had two items, potentially.
Okay, the agenda has already been adopted. So, Council, Mr. Kenny, can you please provide some guidance on what to do at this point?
Well, the consent agenda, so when that comes up, I can ask it at that point. No.
No, consent agenda, there's not supposed to be any discussion, which is why we remove items from the consent. Dan, Mr. Kenny can correct me if I'm wrong, but that is my understanding is that there's no discussion or debate on consent agenda items.
I mean, that is typically how it works. I guess I'm confused. Is there, was there something on consent that was supposed to be pulled but was not?
So we had received a message from a council member to remove Agenda Bill twenty one dash seven four A, but I did not see a request to remove Agenda Bill, any of the other Agenda Bills. So council just approved the agenda with the consent agenda, having removed Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy four A, and it sounds like there now be, maybe another request.
It was AB twenty one seventy five A. And since there was a request for a budget amendment within it, and it hadn't been brought to council, that seemed different and not typically a consent agenda. And so I had, I had brought that up. And so I I guess I explicitly needed to say I wanted it polled, but I thought that's what I was saying. That I didn't feel comfortable with that type of an item being on a consent agenda.
Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. I may not have heard correctly, but I thought the one that we had pulled was seventy five A, which was the Water System, Telemetry and Controls.
It was seventy four A.
Seventy four A.
So it sounds like to hold. But the, so now the agenda has been approved. And we're at consent, so.
Well.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure the proper procedure.
Yeah, it's very unusual. I, I, I think you can use a motion for reconsideration. I think anybody that voted in the affirmative to approve the agenda could move to reconsider. Everybody could vote on that to put that motion back on the table. And then Councilmember Napland could remove something additionally before a vote on the agenda happens again.
Mayor Protem Remington?
Thank you for the advice. Mayor, I move that we reconsider our vote on the consent agenda to allow us to remove seventy five A and move that for discussion at regular council meeting.
Second, Michelle Hoag.
And just, sorry, just for clarification, this is not a reconsideration on the consent, rather the adoption of the regular agenda.
So any discussion on reconsideration of the adoption of the council agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say no. All right, and so through discussion, we have we have on the agenda, I'll restate everything, including removing Agenda Bill twenty one seventy five A from the consent. So for under additions or corrections, please add payroll for July twentieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents. Claims for July second, two thousand twenty one through July twentieth, twenty twenty one in the amount of three hundred and forty two thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty four dollars and oh eight and eight cents. We have a request from Councilmember Napland to remove Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy four A and Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy five A from the consent agenda, and those will be removed, moved to items one and two under unfinished business. And we have Councilmembers Shaffer, Hoag and Lengel that would like to speak this evening. Now, I would like to be happy to entertain a new motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved, McHenry.
Second chief.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So moved, McHenry.
Second chief.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And first off, Clerk Wykoff, did we receive any emailed emailed comments from the audience?
We did not, and I have given permission for our one attendee to speak if they would like to do so at this time.
Great. So the attendee on the phone, if you would like to provide public comment this evening, you've, if you could please state your name, and you will have three minutes to speak to any topic you wish. I'm seeing that individual muted themselves, so I'm going to assume unless they speak up quickly that that means they do not have public comment. And we will move on to the mayor's report. First up, just wanted to give folks just kind of a quick rundown of what's going on at the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee. We did have a meeting last week where we looked at you know, obviously what was done last year, adding new priorities potentially to the agenda for the upcoming session. Significant amount of discussion regarding police reforms. Of course, every jurisdiction is concerned about implementation, even though there is strong support for the reforms in acknowledgement that they are necessary and prudent and good policy. But as Chief Tabaq is well aware, there's some challenges with implementation, and cities are hoping to get some clarification on some of the laws in the coming months, if not at the latest at the next legislative session. A couple of items that did come up. And forgive me, I'm scrolling through a document at the moment. Just a second so I can get to it. Under transportation, we are getting wind that there may be a special session in October or November, specifically to address transportation funding and hopefully get some sort of package through. There will be additional work, in particular, on House Bill fifteen twenty three, which was, we were asked to vote on a priority wise. And that bill is concerns to transportation benefit district sales tax. If for folks that don't know, you can have a transportation benefit sales tax for two, up to twenty years total. After that, you can no longer have that under existing state law. So the legislation that that is proposed and folks are AWC, I think is likely to be strongly in support of, is getting a change to make it automatic that cities can get reapproval every ten years in perpetuity. So. So. In addition, of course, we're looking, talked about OPA permission, excuse me, OPMA provision, provisions and others. And at the step we are now, it's really discussion. The committee voted on potential priorities as far as support, endorse, monitor, oppose. Those, that data will be sent out, I believe, to all the cities in the not too distant future, and we'll continue our work pushing forward towards the twenty twenty two session. There was also the National League of Cities Summer Conference. I was able to attend one of those sessions live with the Small Cities Council, as well as the Transportation Infrastructure Committee. I did have some things that interfered with that, but one of the key topics of consideration was the President's Infrastructure Bill and potentially getting some bipartisan support and getting that out. Broadband transportation. All of our water sewer infrastructure was a big topic of conversation, as well as the impact of electric vehicles on our system, in particular, for example, the collection of fuel tax. So with that, most of the rest of our work has surrounded internal city operations and issues, and happy to entertain any questions. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to. I don't see Chief Burke here for King County Fire District forty five. Unless I'm missing something? Okay. And I guess I will take that quick opportunity to report that administration did have a meeting with the fire district, our first in-person meeting in probably two years this morning to talk about items of mutual interest, including our future city facilities, their plans that they have in the works, et cetera, and just getting overall up to speed with what the fire district is doing. So with that, then we can move on to council reports and Councilmember Shaffer.
Okay, thank you. I attended a briefing by the King County Public Health Department this morning related to COVID, of course. And it's a bit of a both the good news and a bad news story. Most of the bad news, as you can probably assume, was around the variants that are now circulating. The, a couple of numbers were thrown out. Around the end, end of June, King County was having fifty new cases per day. Now, we're back up to a hundred and thirty nine new cases today. And that's a mixed bag. Part of that is certainly due to the new variants and the, the fact that the Delta variant appears to be more transmittable. But in addition, you know, there's some activities going on and things like that that also probably contribute to more, you know, more spreading through social events. Also, let's see, South King County has the highest incident rate. The East King County and Boshan Island have the lowest incident rates. Duval, of course, is included in the east, east King County. There's, besides the Delta variant, there's also an Alpha P one variant that I actually hadn't heard of before. But that's the second most common variant now, so it also appears to be more transmittable. Hospital, in addition, hospitalization rates are increasing. The overall King County numbers for twelve plus years old is eighty percent for the first dose and seventy four percent completed. That's actually quite good for the county overall. In the Duval zip code, I looked this up, by the way, this is nothing they needed to report. I looked this up on the King County website. Our zip code has eighty five percent with the first dose and eighty percent with the full series, the two doses. And the CDC is not recommending any kind of a booster shot yet for the, for the variants. And that was it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaffer. And thank you for attending that meeting. I got to be on part of it and didn't get to hear all the details. So it's always nice to have another council member participate. Anybody have any questions for Councilmember Shaffer? All right. And moving on to Councilmember Hook.
Thank you, Mayor. This last week, I attended a Sound Cities Association's Public Issues Committee meeting. On our agenda was a metro plan updates. And countywide planning policy is, was on our agenda. We also discussed the clean water plan, which I, I found kind of interesting. So and then the solid waste rates and fees, I think that there's an inevitable fact that will, that the fees will have to be raised at some point. So that's kind of been a discussion. I also learned that the King County libraries are now open. Maybe for those that didn't know that, it's kind of exciting. And then this last week, I also attended the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee. And it was our first meeting of the year. We have, I think, three or four meetings in the next couple of months. And so this meeting, we didn't make any, we didn't vote on anything, but that will be to come. We kind of reviewed the twenty twenty two budget for flood control, and they discussed some of the grant requests that have come forward. So, yep, it was, it was a good meeting, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Does anyone have any questions for Councilmember Hope? Seeing none, we can move on to Councilmember Lengel.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in the fall of twenty nineteen, I was, I brought up several times the idea of using interns, which administration has subsequently done in a couple of spots, and it's been working well. But at the same time, I learned about a program at the University of Washington called Livable Cities, and I've been trying to track that program for a while, and I just wanted the council as a whole to know that I was actually contacted by them a week ago, and they said they'd love to work with Duval. So I contacted the mayor and, and, and Director Thomas. And I understand, Mayor, we're going to be meeting in a couple of weeks, hopefully, and talking about some more, but it is a very interesting program, and hopefully there'll be an opportunity to have them at the Land Use Committee and even do a presentation at a COW, because this isn't just students, it's, it's faculty. I understand it's very professionally done, and it could really help us with a lot of things that we are not going to be able to have money for anytime soon in planning, economic, could be economic development. You know, really whatever administration wants to put forward, because ultimately this is administrations to bring to council, but there's so many possibilities. I, I just wanted to be sure that I let everybody on council know that this has happened, and let's see what happens. So thank you, Mayor, for, for exploring this with us.
Yeah, and thank you for continuing to ask. As we've gotten emails, it's always hard to, to even look at some of these new programs when we're dealing with so much, and I know I'm looking forward to learning more about the program. So thank you for continuing to bring it up until we could get the meeting on the calendar. Appreciate it. All right. And if we don't have any questions for Councilmember Lengel, we can move on to council committee reports. And first up is finance and administration.
Thank you, Mayor. At our last meeting, we spent a good portion of our time talking about investment strategy. We, as a city, have money invested that currently is earning very little, partly because of market. We looked at options for investing that money. It's approximately thirteen million dollars. We had a guest speaker, Peter Becker, with Time Value Investments. He presented some options for us, and at our next meeting, which is this Thursday at three o'clock, we'll be discussing further investments, including commissions. So what it costs us to invest those monies, liquidity. We certainly don't want to invest it all and have it locked up, so we don't have it available if we need it. And, and what the strategy is for rotating. In other words, you have short-term investments. Our biggest concern that was raised, or several concerns, one was what if interest rates go way up over the next several years, and we've locked up our money at a lower rate? So we're looking at options to do smaller amounts over, you know, and rotating those. So we still have the liquidity and still take advantage of some increased earnings capabilities. And the last thing that we have that we're continuing on is our procurement policy. So that was it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any questions for the Mayor Protem? Seeing none, we'll move on to land use with Chair Hope.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did have a land use meeting this last week, and those in attendance were Councilmember Lengel, Councilmember Napland, Troy Davis, Assela Chavez, and Director Thomas. A lot of the meeting was discussing the Duval Village Commercial Defirmment, which we will be discussing later tonight. And then Troy Davis gave us a presentation on the comprehensive plan docketing. And so that is it for that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chair Hope? Seeing none, we'll move on to public safety with Chair Bridenicki.
We didn't have a meeting this past week. Our next meeting is on July twenty seventh, and I reviewed our agenda, and it's a pretty full agenda, so we'll report after that.
Thank you. Now we're up to public works with Chair McHenry.
Thank you. So we had a meeting last week. It was myself, Council, or Mayor Protem Remington, and Councilmember Shaffer, Director Lenishewski, Alana McCoy, and Sean Tozer. We had quite a bit of things we went over as well. Third Avenue Design, at this point, looking to contract for the most, for most tasks as described, talked about achieving that preliminary design and progress in phases through design, so breaking it up a little bit. Sure, we'll talk more about that later. Big Rock Park, the East Parcel, the contract is coming to council tonight, I believe, deliverable as high level conceptual plan of what could be possible on the property, so that it's a little easier for the community to give feedback, knowing what's feasible or what's not, and looking at about a two-month turnaround for deliverables. We talked about the Complete Streets projects again, also talking about the additional considerations that Councilmember Napland had brought up at the last meeting. The committee still recommends the Cherry Valley Project. Though Director Lenishewski did recommend getting the summer crew to clean up areas on One Fiftieth to improve pedestrian paths, which I think they have already started to do. And talked about telemetry, the twenty percent contingency is proposed. And I think that was pulled from consent, so I guess we'll talk about that tonight as well. So the police station upgrades, we're moving forward with aggregating the grant funds to into city funds to complete all the necessary work. And of course, there's the proposed work and some additional add-ons that we had some discussion around. For me personally, the unisex restrooms is a really big one, and I think that it's nice if you have a female officer, you know, who comes to you wanting a job, and you can already say, oh, we actually already have those separate restrooms. It's just a nicer, instead of, oh, we're working on it, or we're thinking about throwing up a wall. So just like to get that done ahead of time and be proactive. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair McHenry. Does anyone have any questions for our chair? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the ad hoc committees. First up is council procedures and code of conduct with Chair Hope.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did have a meeting on the twelfth, and thank you, Councilmember Bridenicki, for filling in for me, because I was having computer problems and couldn't get to the meeting right away. So Councilmember Bridenicki took great notes and got them out to us right away after the meeting. So in attendance were Councilmember McHenry, Councilmember Bridenicki, our city clerk, Jody Wykoff, and our interim city administrator, Ryan Cotton. And it's going slowly but surely. It feels like we're, you know, we got through chapters two and three, and it's we, I feel like we're accomplishing a lot. I really do. But I know that there are some sections that we feel We, I feel like we're accomplishing a lot. I really do. But I know that there are some sections that we feel. That council will really want to be weighing in on. So I believe that Jody will be working with Ryan to develop some language. That we might be bringing to council at some point, maybe earlier on, I'm hoping in section 3.1 of the of the procedures. So. I think that's it. But thank you.
Thank you. And then we have human services grant policies. Chair McHenry.
There's no update. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And now we are on to item five, administration update with interim city administrator Ryan Cotton and. Our deputy city administrator, Community Development Director, Ms. Laura Thomas. Mr. Cotton, you're on mute.
Go off mute. There's probably a way to do that.
You're off mute now.
We can hear you. Yep.
Yeah, I was afraid of that. Yeah. So you did see the screen there for a minute, right? Let's see. Okay, here we go. Share screen. All right. So hopefully you see it. And this is a report. There's only two slides to it. The first one has to do with everything that I covered a little bit, but I wanted you to see. Wanted you to see the dates. So the ad source, I can show that next. It's if you're anyone's interested, but it's everything from ICMA. The Washington Cities Association, Oregon Cities, California Cities, and then everything in between involving. Lots of different sites involving multicultural and altogether it's $2,300 for advertising. The recruitment brochure, it's eight pages. It'll be coming tomorrow. The Colby Work Styles Assessment is something involving the retreat. And you'll do a 20 minute review electronic, and then you'll have a one hour assessment. With the facilitator and then altogether a two hour assessment as to how we all work together as a team. And that's on nine 10, Friday, the 10th. I was already mentioned that on the 11th. Councilmember Bridnicki cannot be there, but the schedule in the retreat is such that she'll be available. Her duties in New York City will have. At least paused. So thank you, Councilmember Bridnicki. But those are two special meetings. Then there's first and second interviews that are going to be necessary. And September 14th is the day that's been identified. On the schedule I've shared several times and also September 20th. So hopefully you'll mark your calendars. And hopefully, let it let me know if there's an objection or Jody, if there's a problem, but we're hoping that those. Dates can then be inked and that'll make it easier to make sure we. Get to the end of this process expeditiously and Jody can set those special meetings. So I just have one more slide, but I'll pause there to see if you have any questions. All right. Well, because of all of that. Full disclosure, I had promised you a financial plan update and moving forward by this meeting. And these are the things I had promised at the last meeting. I have not done these things. So that will be a goal that I'll be working on as soon as I can get the the ad out and recruitment brochure done. The financial planning process is my next highest priority unless unless someone has a higher one that you want me to work on. That's it for me. Laura.
And and I just real, real quickly, I just want to say that. Ryan has done an absolutely incredible job getting the city administrator process out the door and he's been working on a lot of issues that are not part of his work plan. So it's pretty amazing where we're at today, even without that financial stuff being ready yet. And I see that is just a product of all of his excellent work for the city and it's much appreciated. So. We look forward to the financial side, but we know we're going to get there because that's just what he does. He gets things done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening I have a a short list of items. So welcome back. Phase one, we reopened some of our our city facilities last week and this week. So last week we opened up City Hall. And the police station. We do have part time hours. So I don't know if you've been in yet, but if you haven't, come on in. It's pretty cleaned up and we're excited to be open. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, we're open from 8:30 to 12:00 p.m. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're open from 12:30 to 4:30. We blasted through social media and our website and we did our documentation in both English and Spanish so that we could reach out to more of our community. I think it was really successful. Right now, we're not seeing a lot of customers come back yet, but maybe two to five a day. At City Hall. So we're excited to see that. We will be adding some additional messaging on our City Hall hours. That is the one thing. The front office staff requested because we do have people knocking on our door during the non the non scheduled hours at this time. We also are opening up the depot building this week to our partners. So we're really excited about that as well. If you don't know, we are opening up our permit center as well, and that will happen as part of our phase two work. We have converted the conference room into our permit specialist in our permit center. And because we're doing that, we are going to request some likely upgrades to City Hall, but I wanted to touch base and get a temperature check to see. If we could at least move those forward with a conversation and then also with looking at. What those might cost. We have budgeted them, or sorry, they're not, they're unbudgeted, but we've prioritized them into two buckets. Because we're not exactly sure what the cost would be at this time. Our top priority would be to do an ADA landing. Which is on the north side of the building, which would require a handrail and a guardrail. And then we would finally replace that door as well to make it ADA compliant with a push bar. We would add a small wall sign for the permit center. We would also replace the parking sign that would have a parking center, Parking Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 3:30. Those are our. Historic hours and then a walk up counter inside so people could come through that way so they don't have to go through City Hall. And then our department get called up to the front office as often as we've seen that historically. Our secondary priority would be to tear out the aggregate concrete to match the new concrete, but it's not necessary. It's just a a want. One of the other items that is a want as well is to relocate the garbage and recycle to the alley. Right now it's right in essentially right adjacent to that door. I will go to the next slide and then if council has questions, I am available to answer them. I wanted to give a quick update on the disc golf. So we have a couple of the tasks that we talked about with council completed. So what we did is we consolidated mitigation and tree plantings and critical areas onto a map and we're calling that our mowing map. We were successful in our mowing about six to seven weeks ago. So that's been complete. If you haven't been down there, walk through there. We've also met ESA onsite to just to explore the scope of a disc park there and we've met with one of the two stakeholders. For that project as well. And so right now what we're doing is we're assessing the environmental constraints. And we're almost done with that. And then what we would do is we would look to see what the permitting requirements are. The parcel is located in a floodplain and is a shoreline of the state. So at a minimum, we would have to go through. A floodplain permit and possibly a shoreline permit as well. And out of that exercise, we'll estimate the permit costs. This wouldn't be project costs. It would just be the permit costs. And then what we would need to do as a city is assess the capacity, funding and timing of a project. So I've completed that and now I'm I can take some questions.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Laura, regarding disc golf, what's the next step there? I, the reason I asked that, I have some concerns that really didn't occur to me till I went down there and actually walked through that area. And that was after the mowing, by the way. And walking through there, there were some additional thoughts and concerns that. That, you know, I wanted to discuss at some point, probably not tonight, but but anyway, what what do you think are our next steps with that?
So our next step, it's a complete or environmental assessment for the purpose of permit requirements to move a project forward.
So Laura, if you can expand a little bit more, I think Councilmember Schaefer might be looking more in depth of. You know, kind of the the process of determining if we're going to put in the park and those types of things. Is that correct, Councilmember?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And the, you know, besides the environmental assessment, I, there's kind of a, I guess, I don't know what one would call it, but a. A common sense assessment that one has to go through as far as the, you know, the land is concerned. My, you know, just in short, my concern is walking through there. One could just barely walk through there. Not not only was the grass, you know, unsuitable, even after mowing, unsuitable for walking, but underneath it's terribly rutted and. You know, it would not be suitable as is, even if we had a very short mowing. For for frisbee golf at this at this point. It's going to require some grading and maintenance that we did not previously discuss.
Bingo. If I'm allowed to say that, we definitely noted that when we went down there. I brought ESA has actually been out on the site twice. We walked both what I call the north and the south. The south side is way too bumpy and riveted. We wouldn't even be looking at doing a project. Of that type there because of, I'll just say, the grading or massaging of land that would need to take place. The north side is probably the more optimal side to potentially start a project. But once, once we take the floodplain and start to. I'll just say re contour it even just a basic re contouring of grading. It could trigger different types of permits, including a cultural resource assessment. And a no net rise assessment depending on how far we go. And I talked to the mayor about this late last week. And what I am recommending and will be included in our memo is an option A, which is not as much. Work for the city or for the group. And then option B would be a more like we're, we're all in this and we're going to do some grading and we're going to make it. More approachable for the community. So that was a really good question, Councilmember Schaefer. Does that help answer the question?
It does. It does. Along with that, any grading that we do, keep in mind that's going to require some replanting of grass of some sort. I assume, which means that has to be maintained every year. You know, post flood season as well. So I want us to go into this with our eyes open. I I love the idea of frisbee golf. But I don't want us to be, you know, broadsided by by costs. And and staff time that we didn't previously consider.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. And and to add on to that, besides the technical process, a reminder that none of these are budgeted and staff's work plan for parks and everything else is currently full. And a reminder that what I was hoping to do is kind of bring package together some of the projects that are coming forward. And look at them in the mid biennial budget adjustment process because we also have several new parks coming online. And the city has to figure out how we're going to maintain them. I don't know that we can per se with our current staffing levels do that and add new parks. So that will be part of the discussion and and prioritization. If if we do not have the staffing or or support for some of the projects in the mid by, they will go to a parking lot. To be relooked at for the next biennial budget. So we don't want the ideas or the concepts to go away if we can't do them right away. They, we would like to see them, I think, continue on until we know whether or not they're fully feasible, whether we can do them or not. And then we also definitely need a robust community process because this is community space. And we shouldn't just go, you know, all of the parks that are in development right now have been had significant public process through development agreements, public meetings, et cetera. And these coming from the city, we deserve, you know, we owe it to our community to do the same process with them. So just kind of a reminder, I know council's aware of that, but for folks in the community that may be watching now or watching later. None of this is a done deal and it won't be a done deal until it's budgeted and votes are taken to move it forward. Councilmember Lingle.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I had my mute off. I guess this is a question for Director Thomas. Almost choked there. How, how much? How, how much staff? Well, I don't want to talk about staff time. Monetarily. How much do you think it's going to cost to get us to? This preliminary stage where you're going to have, you know, a couple of different options. And I guess one of the other questions along options is, is one of those potential options, a different location for disc golf?
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. We were not looking at options other than the request that came in down at McCormick Park. We are, I believe, if I remember correctly, Director Lenishevsky came and requested some resources and we brought that to council just so that we could do. A high level review. So like kind of that 5,000 level, that 5,000 foot level. And we've allocated just over about $5,000 to $7,500 for that. And that's just to take a look at it because. We're incurring costs because we rent, you know, we rented a mower to go down there and mow that that area. We did a little bit of GIS investment, but that was done by our intern and he did a great job. It was really quick. So there's some staff time investment there. And we've also brought out ESA twice to go out onsite. And now the next step is to determine what the permitting would be and look like. And we'll have a soft estimate of permit costs for option A and a high level option B. But it's not project cost. It's only the permit cost and it's not project or operational costs.
Okay, so can I, I have a follow up to that, which is that, you know, we've talked about this quite a bit in. Finance Committee about moving to. Having a better understanding of total development cost of projects. And this is a, you know, comparatively small project. At least. That's the way it was originally thought about before we started really exploring the site. So it's, it seems like we want to have that, that sense. As early as possible as even if it's a range as you look at your alternatives. Especially if it's something that might go into a mix with other things. That way we're always looking at projects the same way. So that's my thought anyway.
So Councilmember Naplin, or sorry, Lingle, that's a great question. I think I would need to work through, obviously, the mayor and Steve if we wanted some soft estimate for project costs and operational costs. Because that wasn't part, at least initially, of this first phase of work.
Yeah, and I'm just throwing that out there for everyone to keep in the back of their mind, particularly on council. And administration can think about that. But. There's always a little more to this just than developing something.
Thank you. Councilmember Naplin and Councilmember Hope.
Yeah, just I totally understand that sometimes projects can morph into something bigger than you expected, but. Kind of along those same lines, I wanted to let everyone know I attended another meeting with. The outdoor recreation. And the reason I'm bringing up now is I think it is related. There's one category of King County Parks levy, these new grants they're offering. And it's for a open space river corridors program and they have $22 million. To hand out over the next few years and McCormick Park is that area that would likely qualify for this and. Quite some time ago, there was a visioning of McCormick Park. I think it was early 2000s and Steve shared with me a map that had all of McCormick Park built out. It was amazing. Obviously, it never got implemented, but there are some needs in McCormick Park that, especially, you know, trying to, there's the shoreline that's kind of sloughing off and becoming steeper and having issues. And, and it looks like the type of project they're, they're going to be interested in is one that could combine kind of shoring up these problem areas along the river, along with creating some recreation at the same time. So it was quite interesting and I, I think Steve will probably bring this up in the Public Works Committee, but.
Yeah, I'm going to recommend that we, we stick to the, the topics at hand. Steve is working on that and we'll go through Public Works Committee.
But. The reason I'm bringing it up is, you know, when you realize a project morphs into something bigger, it could be combined or, or in a larger effort. And so it felt like it was related. But disc golf, according to some other grant programs, is considered more of a passive recreation because there's really not a lot of built infrastructure. So I wanted to throw that out there.
Councilmember Hope?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did get an opportunity to walk the property with Councilmember Naplund. And I guess my question for Director Thomas is you mentioned that the north end was probably more suitable than the south end. Is, are you referring to, when you say the north, is it like past that bridge that we went across and went around?
So when you come down from the tech center where the little informal parking lot is, and you go straight down that, that boundary, I look at that as north. And then when you go to the left, we look at it south. So it's from the perspective of where the tech center is.
Is that big enough for nine holes there?
Yes, when I, when we met on site, you could probably get 18 holes on the north side.
Thank you. Any more questions from Ms. Thomas?
So Mayor, I was hoping to get some direction on the permit center improvements. If I have direction to bring something forward to look at now at costs.
So, you know, I think I'll, I'll just say that this is actually really critical to our city operations because we don't have facilities large enough for everyone at this point. We're making some pretty big adjustments, especially to have the community development department housed together. So I, I would just ask if anyone objects to us bringing forward the plan and proposal to make these improvements, to please let me know right now, if you can raise your hand. And if I don't see raised hands, I will take that as everyone's in support of moving forward with these improvements to City Hall to accommodate our permitting. So I'm Councilmember Berniki.
I think I'm a little confused here. Are we still talking about disco?
No, so Councilmember Berniki, Ms. Thomas went back to asking for direction in, and kind of in inkling before she digs into the work of bringing forward the budget request and construction support for getting the City Hall improvements that are necessary to house the permits that are through council. I don't think that she's to do the work without having used a head nod that folks agree that we need to do the work.
I, well, I just have a comment in that I think I have said for over 10 years, we need an improvement to City Hall, that it's long overdue. And I definitely would support us figuring out that and finding a solution and, and doing something about it.
Thank you. So I'm not seeing any objections. So I'm taking that as task at support for bringing a proposal forward and we'll go ahead and move on. We do not have any presentations tonight or a public hearing, so we'll move on to our first item of new business. Agenda Bill 21-76A Police Collective Bargaining Agreement for Discussion and/or Decision. And we'll let Ms. Mason lead this one.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Dana Mason, Finance Director. So Police Chief DeBach and I had the opportunity to meet with, with council and go through the contract. And the Labor Attorney Dan Swedlow also had a chance to walk council through some of the highlights of the contract and ask any questions. So I just wanted to check and see if there was any further questions and then request that if there aren't any, that council considers approving it this evening rather than foregoing the three touch rule and approving it this evening.
I'm not seeing any. So with that, I would be happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I move, we suspend our rules.
Second, Berniki.
Right. Any discussion on the rule suspension? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, would someone like to make a motion on Agenda Bill 21-76A?
I would like to move for approval AV 21-76A Police Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second, McHenry.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Berniki and a second by Councilmember McHenry. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Well, that's one more big item off our list. So thank you all. And thank you to all that worked on the bargaining team to work with the FLP to come to a fair agreement and helping us continue to move forward. Moving on to Agenda Bill 21-77A, Ordinance to Amend City Administrator Pay Scale for Discussion and/or Decision. Mr. Cotton?
Thank you, Mayor Members of State Council, Ryan Cotton, interim city administrator. And I'm going to share my screen to look at the document we were last looking at associated with the, the survey we did. So for people who are just joining us, there were 21 cities we looked at to determine what is a competitive pay range. And right now we are at a range that tops out at 154, which sounds like a lot, especially to people of my age, but we, we are in a competitive marketplace. The, the situation in terms of searches has just gotten harder every year that goes on. Baby boomers are retiring. Not that many people are getting into municipal government. There's been quite a bit of turnover. The particular search firm that I do work for prior to this job, and I do a little bit now and will do more later, they're up over 50% in terms of the number of searches that are going on. So it's a very competitive marketplace. It's great for the job seeker, not so good for those seeking to fill jobs. So the wisest thing to do is to do a mini comparable study of, of the marketplace and then position yourself so that you can be, at least get applications in the door. And after that, it's, it's, it's chemistry as to who you like. It's how they like the community. That's chemistry. And then it's, there's a little bit of finesse in terms of, of how, how, how the program is the total package. So anyway, the city of Duval right now, 8,090 people, salary range that exists currently. I think this is the second year of the biennium, 137 to 154. How does that compare? So we looked at communities as small as Carnation, 2,200, and as large as, as about 39,000 and everywhere in between. How did these get chosen? Well, it was based on geography more than anything else. Of course, we didn't want to go super large. Sammamish or, you know, Bothell or some other places that, you know, don't compare because of size. But I know, for example, you heard me say that I looked at some of these communities when I was looking at moving to the Midwest because that it was in the right place. In addition to being in the right place, though, you also don't want, I mean, you need to pay a, a fair wage compared to those who are also offering. So my family lives in Seattle, so we wanted to be within driving distance, for example. Clyde Hill was, was of interest at one time, same with, same with Normandy Park. And you can see how their pays compare if, if you use my example as a one case study. So to add it all together, you know, so we, there's, you can manage this data. This is a mean, the number that's unadjusted is 133,000 as the minimum. That it relates to the 2020 salaries. We're in 2021. Most communities adjusted by 1% at the beginning of the year. We just heard that the inflation rate is actually, or I heard from the Labor Attorney before we got started, it's going to be at 5.5% is where it's at right now. The, you know, most, some communities, ours included, went 2.5%. So this may actually be a little lower than it should be, but I'm being conservative with the tax dollars here. So I added 1% to this number and came up with 134,873. The top of the range, the mean is 168,000. You add 1%, it's 170,487. Some communities pay on a flat rate right here. And when you look at their median, it's 170,000, once adjusted by the 1%. So there's several ways you can look at this. We could just say, hey, let's pay the median and, and select these two numbers, 134 and 170. So we know we're not missing it entirely. We won't totally miss people who are interested. But, you know, maybe the, maybe, maybe we won't get everybody to apply that, that is out in the marketplace. And I think that's probably okay. I think if I, if, if our lives depended on it, I would go higher than this 170,000 number, maybe 175. But I think that's a reasonable number, depending on the, the thoughts of council. So we could round it up and make a range of 138 to 170, because the city's already at 137 as a minimum. Maybe someone is at 120, maybe they come for 134. So I think on balance, I'm suggesting that you just adopt those numbers as your minimum and your, your maximum. And the ordinance that you have in your packet does just that. And there are steps in between. I think there's a total of seven steps. So you don't necessarily need to pay, I said this earlier, so I won't labor it. The, the top, that's why you have a range, because some people, maybe early in their career, not quite as seasoned, is probably going to be fine with the lower end of the range and then there's room for growth. However, if someone's right next door, it doesn't cost them anything to move and Duval is a wonderful place and the recruitment brochure you're going to see says that in spades, then, then, then maybe they would, could make a lateral move for something like 170,000. So you want that in there, but it doesn't mean that you're going to end up there. You will end up somewhere in between. There's no doubt about that. When we stop this conversation, I want to talk about a list of fringe benefits. So I can get your input on that because that helps us make sure we find the right fit and have a good match as well. So I'm going to stop sharing unless there's questions on this sheet.
So assuming we went with the range you suggest, Ryan, who makes the final decision to, what, you know, what level, what offer to give the candidate? Is that the, the mayor?
It's a conditional offer is, my understanding of the, of the law and the Duval's code is the mayor makes the conditional offer. There's an employment agreement that is virtually 100% true in all of these appointments. That employment agreement, I'm recommending the ICMA Model Agreement for starters. And then we're going to talk about the list of fringes in a minute. So that, that discussion happens and then the mayor makes a conditional offer, subject to approval, review, edits by the City Council of the employment agreement. So at the end, the, the City Council actually will control what number gets paid by virtue of what you approve.
By virtue of what we, what we, assuming we make an approval tonight, by, by virtual of what we approved tonight. So for example, if we approve the, your suggestion, the 17447, the mayor could actually make a conditional offer up to that amount. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'm just on it being conditional, subject to detailed background checks, subject to council's review of the employment agreement. I, I suspect there will be discussion, you know, at, at various points. There's going to be a lot of input by council. I've planned through those special meetings in terms of meeting the candidates and getting to know each other. So I suspect that there will not be any surprises to council at that point. But yes, is the short answer to your question.
Okay, good. No, thank you. And, and a comment. So I did a fair amount of recruiting in my previous career. And recruiting quality candidates is extremely difficult, to say the least. But your point, Ryan, I think you previously stated this maybe in the COW, is that the first step, the, the first thing is getting them, getting them in the door, right? If you don't get them in the door, you, you know, you're, you're not, you don't have any chance there, right? So if, if they look at the salary range, decide, no, that's not even competitive, you don't get a chance to, you know, understand, for them to understand what a great place Duval is, some of the fringe benefits that you're going, still going to talk about and things like that. So I, I do support a higher, you know, a higher range of, you know, of the salary range.
Thank you, Councilmember. Does anyone else have any questions or feedback? Councilmember Berniki?
I, I don't really do hiring in this area for myself, but what I'm working with and contracting with folks, and I'm looking at pay scale these days, it is really, Councilmember Schaefer is really right. When you're looking at higher management and what, that's what we're looking at here, it is quite an investment. And I think that when we think about who we're going to have for the city, we have to look at this position really thinking about what an investment that is because that's a huge transition. We're making all this policy. We're doing all of this. And I wouldn't want us to be in a position where someone comes in and they're not happy with the situation, the pay or whatever, and they get pulled away to another city next door. And that's kind of the situation we, we have a, you know, we're in a place where unfortunately we're next to these cities that are in the urban area of Seattle and they, you know, we are competing with them. And I know that when I had my own business in Duval at the Art Center, I could not get people to come out here because Redmond could pay more than I could pay. So it's, it's a, it's a challenge and, and good people at higher management level is really, it's, it's hard. But I would say that I, I would prefer the higher rate because what I would like to see is the investment in an individual that's going to stay here and work with us and, and build a good infrastructure for our administration is what I think in the long term is going to save you money that way.
Thank you, Councilmember Berniki. Councilmember Naplund?
Yeah, thank you for all this work. I just want to say I understand all of the arguments and in many ways I'm supportive. I, I think what is just a struggle for me is when I look at the other cities, almost all of them, even the smaller ones, have just so much higher resources. Their sales tax revenue is much higher. You know, even some of the smaller ones like Swim, they have lots of hotels and hotel revenues, three times the sales tax revenue. They have huge economic engines to pump in more money. And right now it feels like our city's money is coming from development and that's going to dry up. I think there's going to be a day of reckoning and I, I feel worried. So I understand that we need to get someone and this is the market. I just hope we can come up with a financial plan to make this work because almost every agenda item is something that's asking for more than we budgeted. And all those small things add up quickly and it makes me feel concerned. So I, I appreciate the work that was done on this and it looks like this is the environment we're in. But a lot of these other cities have way more resources than we do. So it's, it's tough.
Mayor Pretem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support the higher salary, but I also understand Councilmember Naplund's concern. And I don't think we've asked the question. So it was budgeted at a certain amount. So it was budgeted at a certain amount, we're talking about starting it earlier than the first of the year. And so we're already talking about additional funds expended. Maybe this is a question for either you or mayor or Dana. Do we have the funds, you know, do we have the monies available now? In this budget cycle to be able to pay the higher amount? Benefits, retirement, you know, all the numbers go up when you have higher salary. And I just want to confirm that we've looked at our current budget and have the resources to be able to pay the additional amount.
I think I can answer that, so we 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 do, we do have the resources in this budget, our sales taxes. Are higher, our sales tax revenue is a lot higher than anticipated. We have some savings from our interim city manager, the costs are going to be a little lower than anticipated. Our benefits are going to be a little bit lower than anticipated. But I I I agree that, you know, long term, we're going to have to come up with a solution to sustain. You know, the cost of living increases, you know, in the future.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle. You're on mute, councilmember.
Okay, yeah. You know, this is, this is why it's so important that the next item on. Our interim city administrators' agenda is to get the the financial planning going. There's really only a handful, if you you check around, there's really only a handful of firms that do it. So, and it's only twenty thousand dollars even in our budget, so. It's not something even under our new procurement ideas. Has to have a elaborate process, but. We are really adding up more and more things, and we know there's a day of reckoning on the number of staff. That can do all the work, we did not prioritize our CIP. And that was something council chose not to do, and it was something that I think we all know I was very concerned about, and. And and so there's just, there's just a point when the rubber is going to meet the road, and we have to do some things differently, and so. I I'm just, I I have to say, I really agree with councilmember Naplin, we were adding a lot of different things and and and. And they're necessary, I'm not going to say they're not necessary, but there is an accumulating. Thing here. And the faster we get going on that financial plan, the better. It's just got to move, and I'm thankful, and one of the reasons I'll support this frankly is because I think that is so critical. For our interim city administrator to do next.
Thank you. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I also appreciate all the work that's been put into this, and in short, I support the salary range. But yeah, definitely well received comments from councilmember Naplin and Lingle, and I completely agree. Unfortunately, I think that's just the situation we're in, but it shouldn't, you know, we need to continue to look at that and work to address it. But as for right now, does that affect, you know, me agreeing with or approving the salary range? No, but it's something that we need to keep our eyes on and work on.
Thank you. Anyone else want to make a comment, councilmember Hope?
Thank you, mayor. This one definitely has given me heartburn. It's. I'm so struggling with it, you know, but. I I know the importance of a good city administrator, as we have seen with our current interim city administrator. There's value, but I'm definitely very concerned about salaries and. The rising costs of of, you know, salaries and and. You know, we're always needing more new employees as well, and so it's just, the whole picture is is agonizing to me. I just hope that in in negotiating. We don't just. Throw out the highest number and. You know, we need to really think about it as we as we bring forward a candidate, I don't know. But I'm but. I see the, I see where everyone's coming from, you know, and and. Where the trend is, but thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Lingle.
Yeah, this is just, this is a request to to stay ahead of all of this. Is is, it would be good to see the ICMA's template for a contract. You know, when you can, I mean, obviously, it's not as time sensitive as proceeding with this. But, you know, I would like to get familiar with it in advance, so things can continue to move more quickly.
Thank you, councilmember Nikki. I'm sorry, Mr. Cotton, I'll let you go next.
You know, when we first had this discussion, and this is quite a while ago, I don't even remember. Mayor, mayor would know probably the year when we all had the discussion about a city administrator and why we needed one. And everyone here, I think, is in agreement to that idea, and even back then, when we looked at what it was going to cost us back then. I do recall the number was, you know, I don't know, something like one forty. And I remember talking to the prior mayor about that and how would we pay for it. At this point, I think we have to look at the big picture of the administration of the city. And an investment. And like, you know, as for me as a business person, that's kind of the thing I have to always look at is the investment. One thing that is happening, your city has grown since we last had this conversation many years ago. And I think, you know, I would probably ask the finance director, looking at the current trends, looking at what where we were at when we first started the city administrator position. And where we heading and what are we taking in, because we are, our revenues are certainly different. And we know that we have one time revenues, but I think this the finance director can give us some really good direction on how. We can make this sustainable, and I think that is what is concerned to people is it? How can we sustain this position, the sustainability of it? And so that really is the question here. So I think we could find the answer to that, because we have enough from the past, we know where we're in the present. And we don't have to do a whole lot of, I think, prediction for the future, if we can look at what we've, what the past looks like and where we are currently. The finance director, I think, can give us some good guidance with that, so I think that's really the question we're asking here about sustainability of this administrator.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mayor Pretem? Oh, I'm sorry, I did, Mr. Cotton was about to say something when I called on council.
Go ahead, I I got ahead of myself.
Okay, Mayor Pretem. You're on mute.
Thank you, mayor. I may be ahead of myself too, but I I wanted to recognize councilmembers that share a important concern for our sustainability and the future of raising costs. But I also understand that most understand the circumstances we're in and the importance of having a. A top city administrator. One of the ironies here is I think a really good administrator is really going to help us control costs and be able to look at these long range planning. So with that, I I would propose that we suspend our three touch rule in preparation for bringing this item up for a vote.
I think I saw a second by councilmember Schaefer, so we have a motion by Mayor Pretem Remington. And a second by councilmember Schaefer, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Would someone like to make a motion on on Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy seven eight? Mayor Pretem.
Thank you, mayor. I move that council approve Agenda Bill twenty one. Agenda Bill twenty one seventy seven A ordinance amend the city administrator pay scale.
Second, Schaefer.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pretem Remington, and a second by councilmember Schaefer, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes, and with that, first of all, I'd like to say that thank you to council for the strong seven oh vote. I think all of you know that I share the same concerns about the long term sustainability of our city, especially as we get to a point of building out. When that new revenue no longer comes in. And we know that having our financial plan and the municipal financial planner in place will help us really map out. What those new ongoing property tax revenues and estimated sales tax just based on population will be. That will be very helpful for our long term planning. And I think, you know, it's one of the biggest challenges we have as a city is. And this council has had to make some of the hardest decisions, definitely the hardest decisions in my twelve years at the city. Because these decisions had been put off in the past. And I want to recognize that. You all have been put in a challenging position, as have I. To try and find ways to make sure that we have the staffing and the right staffing at the table to appropriately run the city and keep up our statutory obligations. As well as provide services that our community desires. I'm confident that when we get the municipal financial plan in place, that we'll have an idea of. You know, what we need for today and what we need for the future and a pathway forward. To get us to where we want to go, so that future councils will be able to make educated decisions. Rather than either holding back and guarding or overextending. And so, you know, this this is, this position is going to be. Critical to helping make sure those plans are implemented. And, you know, I'm really hoping that we get the unicorn that we're dreaming of. Because that if we get the right person in this position to, I think it was Mayor Pretem Remington's point. You get the right person in place, and you actually save significant money in other areas, I I believe with the right person in one area in particular that will save significantly on is legal. So I know this is hard for folks, but having that full on support as we move into this recruiting process was very important, and I think that. From me and administration, it's much appreciated, so thank you. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty one dash seventy eight A ordinance amending and creating an administrative leave policy for discussion. This is a first touch. I believe this is the one that the clerk sent out an email about the the title change. We don't need any amendments tonight, this is a first touch, council's not expected to approve it tonight, and we can make changes as we move forward in the process. So with that, Mr. Cotton.
I'll make I'll make this quick, given that we have a lot of things to do, it's not that rocket science, and we're not going to be needing to approve it tonight, so. Basically, there has been administrative leave, it's it's within bounds of what others have done. It's, but the auditors have made it clear that it should be memorialized in this fashion. So the document that you have in front of you and the ordinance was drafted by the finance director to. To to provide all the protections the auditors would like and the consistency, and also make sure that no one uses. Administrative leave first and then gets paid out on vacation when they leave, for example, so it's also more cost effective. So that's really the point of this, it's that simple. And although it gets complicated, because there's another provision of the of the policy, and that's why, thank you, Jody. City clerk sent out a clarification that needs to be deleted, so that's, I think, the second section of the ordinance. Which doesn't relate to all the parameters that this ordinance creates. That the auditors are like, it just said it could be generally provided as long as it was reasonable. So this ordinance tightens up everything quite a bit, and highly recommend it, and it can wait till your next meeting to approve it.
So if folks have any questions in the interim, please reach out to councilmember Naplin.
I I just, you aren't having any discussion during this meeting?
Oh, we can, I think Mr. Cotton was trying to be, to try and move things along a little more quickly in the interest of time. But you're absolutely welcome to have discussion if you so choose.
Sure, I just have a couple of quick comments. It seems like our administrative leave is significantly higher than what is typical. Looks like forty to eighty is is probably more in line with what other cities are doing. I. I also have a question about. It says although there are employment agreements that exist with more administrative leave provided now, they will not be impacted, and it isn't really clear. On which ones are, if there are, and maybe that could be provided to me privately, but it looks like the current admin hours line up with the recommended admin hours, and I'm not seeing any that are receiving more. So I'm not really sure what that statement was referring to.
It relates to preexisting agreements, I believe some of the permanent directors already have employment agreements with ninety six hours. And Dana might be able to clarify this for me, there was a survey that was done. And at the second section of the survey, I I think just. You just quoted forty, ninety six hours at the top part of the survey, but then there's also cities that provide additional vacation to employees. Dana, was that additional vacation intended to to just be in lieu of administrative leave or just calling it a different name? In which, I'm not sure if that's what they intended, but that's between one hundred and twenty eight and one hundred and sixty additional hours, do you know?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure of the intent of the additional vacation, it was just showing that 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 there was more leave provided.
All right, thank you.
So I I do want to make note too that while this this policy is just kind of codifying, you know, how how you. Get the leave, making some changes to how the leaves used, which is actually more favorable to the city. That long term, long term, my preference for exempt staff would be to actually move to a combined leave policy. Where your, you just get a set bank of leave that is sick leave, vacation leave, et cetera. Throughout the year, it makes things clean, you know what you're getting coming in, it does change per year. But when I worked at an employer with that, it was very easy, and in fact, I think. The work product ended up better. As a result, and people also were not afraid of of losing sick leave, so you know, that's just kind of one quick note of the long term future, this is an interim. To achieve what we need to achieve, so councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, I I think that the way this is written can be confusing when it talks about additional vacation. So if you look at like Washougal, for example, it says one hundred and forty four hours vacation for directors, that's not one hundred and forty four additional. You have to subtract what is standard vacation, which is ninety six hours, so really their. Their additional vacation, which is similar to our administrative leave, is only forty eight hours. And so on all of these, where it's talking about one hundred and sixty hours, one hundred and twenty eight, all this, you have to subtract what everyone normally gets to find out what their extra is. So to provide one hundred and sixty hours, non exempt provided with eighty, so that means that the extra leave is only eighty hours. So it's not one hundred and sixty hours, the extra leave is only eighty, and so on all of these, you have to subtract. What is typical vacation versus what directors get for vacation, and the difference is the extra. So if it's one hundred and twenty eight versus eighty, they only got an extra forty eight hours. So if you really look at this, ninety six is extraordinarily high, there is only one city that provides that, the rest are all much lower. So I I just want to point that out there as as we have this discussion, it is, it is very high.
Just a a quick reminder to council that that ninety six hours was specific specifically based. On exempt directors attending council meetings twice a month, and that is how that policy came about. To accommodate them for that extra time that is required inconsistent. So yes, it is, I'm just, I'm just, I'm I'm not, I'm not starting a debate here, I'm just pointing out that point in fact, as a reminder for the body.
I just want to point out that in most of these cities, directors.
I'm going to ask for if there are any other council members that want to speak to this, please. All right, seeing none, councilmember Naplin.
I just want to say that in in most cities, this is leave that's being offered to the directors, and in many cities, there are weekly council meetings versus. Only two a month, so I I understand what it's for, but I I also think that these other cities are providing to the leave to employees that also face. Similar job duties.
Mr. Cotton.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly uh how the numbers came to be. Uh Dana, uh maybe had a, a, some kind of template that she was working with. Maybe we can let you know, you know, how, how those numbers came to be. But of course, when this comes up again, you know, I, I, it council's prerogative to make a motion to amend whatever is in front of you, so.
Great. Councilmember Schaefer?
Uh, did a suggestion, I guess, uh considering what, what Councilmember Naplin found and in my brief uh perusing of this, I, I didn't pick that same thing up. So, so perhaps we could put some clarification in there of what, you know, what's actually uh for these other municipalities, what's actually vacation versus uh, uh versus administrative leave? I think that would at least help everyone's understanding, at least my understanding uh more.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Any other discussion on this topic this evening? Okay, seeing none, I think Dana has a couple of things to uh get for council. And then um if anything else comes up, please contact um, run it through Mr. Cotton and I so that we can work on it with Ms. Mason and uh bring those answers back to council at the next meeting. Uh, so moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventy-nine A, consultant services contract for Third Avenue Design for Discussion. This is a first touch. Mr. Lenishewski is on vacation. And so this evening, we are joined by Mr. Tozer, our uh project manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you. It's Sean, Public Works Project Manager. Uh, thank you. Sorry that Steve couldn't be here. He sent me instead. So uh, we have a few items. I know a couple of the items were moved from consent on to unfinished business. So I had, I had prepared slides for all of them anyhow, so uh we're ready for that. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And we'll just run through. So the, the main thing with Third Avenue here, we'll skip by. So uh, Third Avenue is a uh CIP project, obviously on our, on our tip. It is a large-scale project, can be multiple years for development of design, construction, right-of-way. It'll, it'll be a long-lasting project. Think of it as, as a, an effort similar to Main Street. Obviously, it's a pretty important thoroughfare for the city, uh vital north-south route, paralleling Main Street, connecting every, you know, every neighborhood, really. So uh, there were some funds that were asked for, for design in the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Nine hundred and fifty thousand, I believe, was approximately the amount. And so staff was directed to move forward with uh solicitation and, and selection of a consultant to move that along. Part of getting design funds secured is, again, we, this will be our third TIB project grant application that we'll be submitting here in August. And again, it's hard for us to continue to make the case sometimes that this project is our most important project when we haven't taken any effort uh moving it forward over those three years. And so often, design funds or design and beginning design is a great way to show motivation of the agency and then also prove that uh, that priority to those funders. So it's, it's something that we've used similarly on other projects. And again, you start moving the ball forward and you gain momentum. Uh, so again, large project, there's a couple iterations, a couple, a couple possibilities of how it'd get constructed. But in, in general, the CIP project is one forty-third to Stevens Street. It's about thirty-seven hundred linear feet, pretty long. There's a lot of stuff in there. There's grade challenges. Uh, there's a lot of neighborhood access. There's uh some utilities at Culvert, uh some narrow right-of-ways. But there's also some really uh, you know, wide-open spaces that are, that are ready for improvement. It'll be a lot easier. So we did send a solicitation. We prepared an RFQ document. Uh, uh, we sent a solicitation out to all, what, a hundred and forty-five consultants on the MRSC roster in accordance with our general procurement guidelines. There was three hundred separate emails. So that, the quick math on that generally tells you, we might be getting two, two addresses for each consultant. So hopefully there's a backup. Certainly not all one hundred and forty-five are, are in business anymore or, or interested in this project. But uh, we did receive a number of calls throughout the, throughout the process. So we had a, a number of inquiries. We had some discussions. We had a couple consultants say that uh they were just too busy. It wasn't their interest. Uh, we did two onsite meetings with consultants and then ultimately had three responses received by the deadline. All of those responses were ranked, uh were independently reviewed, ranked. And then uh, we went over the scoring with the committee. We also had, uh, it was kind of fun to have the intern. We had an intern, Mason, did some of the scoring. So he's never done any of this before. Uh, that was fun, actually, to see somebody's very independent um, independent review of this and then also some of the council members as well. So what you see in the agenda, agenda packet, and again, this is really introductory. If uh had things worked out a little bit different, we would have, might have been asking for, for moving a contract forward only because of this gap in council meetings. But the way they, the scope came back to us from KPG, it was, it is priced with a lot of uncertainty. So as I mentioned, there's a lot of, and I believe you guys can see my cursor. This is the large project. We have a culvert right here in the middle that could be a box culvert. It could be a bridge. It could be a span. It could be something else. We're not exactly sure. All these intersections could have separate improvements required. All of them have grade challenges north of, of the culvert. So all of them are, are very steep approaches or on the uphill or downhill side that are gonna be tricky and difficult. Everything south of the culvert's a little bit better for construction. The constructability on all, everything south of the culvert is, is gonna be quite a bit easier. We have quite a bit more room. And again, there's just less interference down there. So talking with a consultant, that's what their initial preliminary scope reflected was a bit of risk. Because again, they're looking at the whole, the whole project and then from conception through construction documents. So it's a large figure. It was uh one point two million dollars. There was a contingency in there as well. But again, they knew that that was beyond our comfort level. Uh, so we expressed that earlier. And then we talked about sort of a middle way. So the, the approach we wanted to present, wanted to present to council and that, you know, we hope you guys will, will think is the right way of doing this is breaking this up into sort of a smaller um pre-design almost activity. All of the assessment and analysis that we're gonna do for traffic and stormwater, environmental, all of that is gonna be project required. Uh, but we're proposing to do some of that upfront and under a separate authorization, so a limited contract, and then have a better idea on some of these unknowns. So then we can tackle the design uh documents under a, a better defined scope. So we'll have answers to whether every intersection needs to be aroundabout or whether we're gonna be grading, you know, a million yards up the, you know, a million miles up the hill to, to catch ADA or something like that. We'll be able to answer a lot of these questions that are kind of unknown. And unknown creates risk. Risk creates cost. So I, I think that our recommendation will be to move this forward and that is our intent unless we're, we're really waved away and told not to do it. The consultant has already said that they're more than, more than comfortable in this approach and, and they think it'll also be beneficial for them as well, of course, to have a little bit of better definition right at the outset. So uh, that is, that is it in a nutshell. And again, this is really informational. We want you guys just to kind of know. And, and my assumption is unless we're told otherwise, by the time you go, uh, council, council recess is over and we're back in mid-August, we will hopefully have a scope of work for you and a new cost for the preliminary items. So that is all I have on this particular item.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Lingel has her hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and I appreciate the, the quick summary here. I, I took a pretty um quick look, but I think um, understanding the contract. One of the main, I'm, I'm glad you're doing your look at, you're going back and rethinking how you're gonna flush out some of these unknowns. Because one of my concerns about that contract, and this would still potentially apply to whatever proposal you bring forward, is we end up getting pretty deep in pre-development expense with this project without having um a better sense of what the whole thing is gonna cost. Now, don't leap to an assumption that you can't estimate the project. That's, that's not what I'm referring to. What I'm referring to is I think that we have to get a better handle on the whole thing. Because once you're at thirty percent design development, um, you, you've got a huge amount of money in a project you may not be able to afford and maybe not even afford the phasing that you intend. So uh, those are my comments uh for this evening. And um, I do think that being in a full thirty percent without having a better understanding um is not a good idea. It's not something I think I could support. So the more information you can get in this pre-pre-design, I think that's a good way to go. It is a huge project and um, yes, I'll just leave it that way.
Thank you. And yeah, I, sorry, Mayor. I, I glossed, I glossed over that. Yes, part of this, uh, part of the deliverable, even in this limited scope, will be some uh rough order magnitude and then costs and then maybe phasing suggestions and of course conceptual layout. So it's gonna be one of the biggest drivers, right, is what do we choose to put in this corridor? And what are our requirements as a city and as a, as a governing body of what we want to see this corridor look like? So yeah, I, I think this will help define that a lot, a lot better.
Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I provided a few questions late this afternoon. I'm not sure if you have seen them, Sean?
I did.
Okay. Do you, do you want to maybe address a few of them or do you want me to ask them or?
I know I got some of them. Sorry, I'm trying to open it on my other screen. Uh, so the ones that I can't really speak to just because I can't make numbers dance is the uh, some of the tip, the TIF, the impact fee related. I don't know exactly. I mean, you know, I'm a spender of money and not a mover of money. And so I don't exactly know how all those pots go. I, I don't know what's been pre-allocated uh in other years. I don't know how much of this project has been costed out against current developer fees.
So yeah, my, my concern is that if you look at the tip, it describes this project, I think, being about five thousand, or excuse me, five million dollars and only about a million of it eligible um for traffic impact fees. Yet, when it is funding the design portion, it's assuming that traffic impact fees will pay for all of it. Well, already it looks like the design is gonna go over even the amount that's eligible. So um, and then that leaves the construction of the project to have absolutely no ability to use traffic impact fees because it will have used them all up. So I am just trying to like wrap, you know, try to contemplate where in the world we're going to come up with. Best-case scenario, only four million dollars more. And my guess is this, if the design is one point two million, I worry that our construction costs could be a lot more than what would be remaining. I, I just don't see any funding strategy here. And so before we invest in such an enormously expensive project, probably one of the most expensive projects we will ever get into in recent history, um, I, I don't see any funding strategy because traffic impact fees are gonna be used that by design. And so.
Mr. Tozer, I, I, if Councilmember Britniky will indulge, I would, uh, it would be great for her to chime in right now with her experience um as a council member on both of our Main Street projects and how that came about without a funding strategy. Sorry to, one spot, Councilmember, but I think it's important.
Um, well, you know, the first thing is really when you're doing those big projects, you have to get the design going because that has to be submitted in order to qualify for granting. And then it's, it's, it's something that really both projects, you don't have the full amount in front of you. It's, it's a process and I do recall that when we did the first part of Main Street, we just happened to do it during a time where we went into a recession. And therefore um, the, the cost of labor went down, the cost of materials went down as well. So we were under the budget that we had put in place, which was really nice. But what happens when you're working on it is as we work through it, I remember, for example, in the design aspect, when we looked at sidewalks and how large they were gonna be and what they would encompass, that we could adjust the budgeting for that by making it a little more narrow and bringing the cost down. So there, it's, you can't have everything in front of you right exactly as you expected. You have a, a budget and approximation that you work with. And within that, there is a flexibility to redesign certain elements or remove certain things or, you know, with um, uh, it can be furniture, like street furniture. It can be things like if you had exercise equipment, take the exercise equipment away. It can be even how you uh landscape it and such. But I do recall when we worked on the project that we were able to stay within our budget. And, and that there is, when you're working with the design people, they understand that as well and they work with you and they come up with brilliant solutions on how you can save money. So I think it's, it's a process that requires you to go through it. And from my experience working with Steve, he has always been very, very good at understanding how to stay within that budget. So I, I, I don't think you, we never worked on both of those with here's a set price and we're gonna, this is it and that's how it's gonna be. It was something that we kind of, it was where we worked with it. And um fortunately, for the first part, we were under budget due to the circumstances of the economy. In the second round, I'm not sure exactly where all those numbers lie, but these are big projects and granting funds had come in and we got more granting than we anticipated. So I think those are all things that you don't know upfront, but I, from my experience in our work with um the state, it seems as though our staff does a really good job of finding all this grant money and so, um, for our build-outs. So that's my experience.
Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, we talked about this in committee and I know everyone on this meeting right now knows how important this project is. And I actually drove back and forth on there today four times, I think. You know, going around people with strollers and dogs. I know, we all know that. I know we've all walked around here and we know this is a really big deal. Um, I, you know, in my experience with seeing the grant process and other things, for example, joint recommendations committee, the extra grant dollars that get awarded is always to shovel-ready projects, people that are ready to start construction where planning is done. And so I, I think this is a really important first step. And I think that staff has some really great experience on how to parse this out so that we can um have minimal risk, but get the work done because there are a lot of unknowns here. Um, and I think this is a really great company too. I was one of the people that rated the three applications. So I, I think that this is the way to go. Um, and you know, I, I just trust that it's gonna work out in small chunks that we can handle. I know it's a lot of money, but I think that we'll have time to get uh funding sources. But it may not all come together right now where we understand that process, but I, I think it'll happen in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. Any other questions or comments this evening on this item? Mayor Pretend Remington and then Councilmember Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is just a big project and my, my only comment, uh, thank you, Sean, for bringing it forward for discussion. Uh, this is one of those we need to chew on. I think we need more information. Um, one of the first big steps is, is certainly design. Um, and we recognize that the uh original numbers we received on the bid were several hundred thousand more than what we'd kind of planned on. So that's a bit of a shock. But uh, I'm glad we're moving forward, looking at this, asking the tough questions. Um, I do have one question for you and maybe it's not something that gets answered this evening. We originally had put in for a grant, which did not come through. Uh, is it our expectation that we'll be going out for a grant again? And what is the likelihood, um, assuming the grant folks gave us some feedback? What's the likelihood we might get some grant monies to help with this early part of the project?
Uh, so one of our, one of, one of our hopes was to be under, so uh, TIB's grant cycle comes up in early August. So we'll be applying for uh, TIB, we'll be preparing our, our TIB grants in, in August and submitting later in August. So yes, we intend to submit a urban arterial uh, uh, application for this project. This will be our, as I mentioned, our third time going in and, and requesting funding. We do know that TIB has an appetite for this project and other projects, but to certain levels. So talking with some of our folks, we're trying to see if we can thread the needle and find a sweet spot where we fit in into a funding parameter that they're interested in. Uh, again, I think a lot of that is focused more towards construction than design, though, as is typical. Uh, TIB often participates in all phases, but I mean, really, that's the, that's the agency you leverage for construction funds. That's what you. TIB often participates in all phases, but I mean, really that's the, that's the agency you leverage for construction funds. That's what you, that's who's going to give you money to actually build something. Short of federalizing this project, which we haven't attempted to do yet, and I, I would prefer not to do is, uh, we could go after Puget Sound Regional Council funding. Again, federalizing a project adds more cost. If you're, uh, it costs you almost as much money as you get. So unless we were going to get something on the order of like three million dollars or, or two and a half million dollars out of a federal agency, I, it would not really be worth it for a project like this. There's a couple other grants that we'd be looking at that we would be competitive for. One of those would be some of the, um, and actually KPG brought one of this up because they're working on some other agency applications, but specific to the culvert. So there's some granting agencies that are funding that type of work. And again, that's how you create a plan. That's how you create a funding plan is you start identifying the pieces that fit with different grant agencies and then you start filling those gaps. And it's a little bit at a time. And, and so it could be that we find a little bit of money that builds the culvert. We could find a little bit of money that helps our stormwater and, and does some LID and some other things that we want to accomplish that they'll pay for. And all those little bits add up and it takes time. I know on our, uh, on the Main Street South, so the one that we finished in 2018, my first funding application we wrote for that was in 2012. Uh, you know, our first presentations we gave were in 2012 and then 2013. We didn't get any money till 2014 or 2015. And then we got some money and then we started some movement and then we got some more money. And then we've made some more movement. We got some more money. And so it's just as, as Councilmember Brittany mentioned, it's just part of the process, you know, and, and you have to take a little, you have to move a little forward so you can take another step forward. And it's, this isn't going to be fast. We're not obligating ourselves. We're not going to be throwing money out the window immediately. It's just part of the, the, the time it takes to do this.
Thank you.
Um, Councilmember Schaefer, did you have your hand up?
I, I did. Yeah, thank you. Uh, let's see, just a couple of comments. First of all, I very much liked the idea of phasing this, uh, project, uh, trying to do a, you know, a bit of, bit of it at a time. I think, as you said, Sean, this will help our understanding, help our, uh, our design consultants understanding as, as well. So I see a lot of value in that. I would like to try to prioritize on how we do this phasing. Uh, and I'm sure you guys probably already have this in mind, but, but, you know, safety concerns around intersections, that ought to be a top, you know, a top priority. You know, uh, the culvert, uh, storm drainage, you know, that all leads to be, be a priority. And then, you know, the, you know, the list goes down, you know, down from there. But, uh, I, I really would like to see intersections, safe intersections be, uh, be one of the top things that we, uh, we consider.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember Langill?
Yeah, there were a couple of things in the proposal that I, that I, I wanted to comment on that were not related to the phasing at all. Nice to see that there's some citizen participation money in there. But I think we're, we're, we're going to need to do a lot more in terms of public involvement, particularly given that this is going to happen over time. So that's, uh, and that might be done by the consultant. It also might be something that we have to do internally. And, um, so I wanted to make that comment. And because they, the, the way they did their proposal, there's like fifty thousand dollars sort of as a management contingency. Uh, but when you look at the number of meetings they're going to do for citizen participation, that type of thing, it, it, you know, and I'm not saying that this makes the, their response negative, but I, I just see with, with as much, uh, going on and that amount of distance. So, um, and then there was, um, there was one other thing in there that I thought could impact the management uh, amount. Can't remember. Oh, I know one other thing, um, which is that I, I do think that on a project of this scale, and I'm not exactly sure when, because, but because different people like to approach it differently, but I do think we should not forget outside estimating. And I do think that as we look at the contract, we should be establishing a better understanding at the council of, you know, what we're looking at at costs as we go along. And I mean, I, I am familiar with how Main Street was financed because I actually went back and listened to Puget Sound, uh, you know, the regional councils tapes on that project. And, um, there was a, quite a bit of investment from the regional council in upfront design phases. And, um, so, oh, I know what the other, the, uh, so on the issue of federalizing it, I appreciate Mr. Tozer's opinion uh, on that, but, um, sometimes that's what you have to do. Because the only other choice we have to remember with Main Street was bonds. And, um, I've actually had lots of good luck with federal funds, so I guess I have a different karma or something. Uh, but, um, yeah, we, we had to issue bonds to, to finish Main Street. And Main Street is a, is a state highway. I mean, there, it has certain elements to it that make it possibly, uh, um, much more attractive for funding sources. I mean, this is, uh, still in a role to the city, the grid. So those would be those, but I really do like, uh, the fact that we've got citizen participation in there and I think we'll probably have to do more, particularly within the city. And so there's another piece of lift there on the FTE side for public works.
Thank you, Councilmember Langill. Anyone else on this one? Great. Um, before we move on, I just will say that, uh, Councilmember Brittany may remember very well when, uh, we were looking to do Main Street South, my biggest challenge was how are we going to come up with the money if we're moving forward with the project? Are we going to get it? Um, and we did. And I think one of the things that I, I would like folks to think about is that, um, in the last four years alone, we've brought in nearly a million dollars in direct appropriations. Uh, that's just from the state legislature. That doesn't include the millions and millions and millions of grant dollars we've also brought in. Um, so I think, uh, the uncertainty is natural and normal. It's always scary when you don't have a plan ahead of you. However, uh, to, um, Councilmember Langill's point, et cetera, these projects tend to come together. Um, if you continue to put the effort and keep the pressure on the agencies as well as the elected officials to get the funding in. Um, I just will note, uh, just as a point of information for folks, um, that weren't on council. And for the Main Street project, uh, we did ask for state funding, uh, through the transportation budget to get that project funded. We didn't get it. Our consolation prize was, uh, TIB money. And so sometimes what happens as well is you might ask for a direct appropriation. You might not get that direct appropriation, but you may have built a compelling enough case that the granting agencies put you at the top of the list. Um, and that's exactly what happened with Main Street South. Um, and I would have no doubt that that would be a very similar situation with Third Avenue. And we're starting to see more cities get, uh, that are ISF like ours, getting streets like that funded. Um, and so I think the opportunity is also right. Um, stall, stalling on this project now as far as design, we're going to be out of the loop for another five to 10 years on funding circles on it. So, um, yeah, I know it's another one of those hard things, um, but looking at the big picture, the long-term goals, I hope will help make folks more comfortable as well as looking at the history of what our team has done to bring funding directly to the city to offset the direct taxpayer cost. Um, so looking forward to continued discussion as we move on. Um, agenda bill twenty-one dash eighty-eight, police building renovation expenditure approval, um, for discussion, Mr. Tozer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sean, again, Public Works. Uh, so this topic I have a little bit about. I, I know Chief DeBak is here as well to speak on this if we'd like. I have a, again, a PowerPoint slide queued up. So, uh, in short, I believe the summary of this item is more or less a question as to whether this is a, a, a number plus a number, which I believe is what staff is asking for or, and then direction to move forward with that. And then also the, the projects kind of list. So, uh, as, as you are all likely very aware, there was a hundred and four thousand dollars in the budget, the city budget twenty-one, twenty-two for some improvements at the police department. That included, and I know this is really fuzzy, but some interior exterior painting, some HVAC work and, uh, interior floor replacement, which would be interior. Uh, again, the estimate on that was one hundred and four. That was approved in the city's budget. Talk about this appropriation that came through, again, of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred sixty dollars that came through from the state recently for work again at the police department. So as this project, and as we talked about project, projects morphing earlier and how you get into a project and sometimes they grow, uh, as staff is moving through this building and looking at all the things that needs, needs to happen. And again, as you're replacing carpet, you're moving every bookcase, every shelf, every desk, every, everything to replace flooring. So then it becomes, some of those questions also start about certain desks, you know, should you need to fix something or should you be replacing something else? And so again, I wasn't necessarily a very large part of the development of this project, but I understand how the thought process has unfolded. And so ultimately, I think you guys have in your agenda bill, uh, more or less a list of like twenty separate projects or twenty different tasks, I should say. Uh, one of those is roofing, I believe, which is already under contract right now. I believe that was approved at the last, uh, council meeting and is moving forward. And then there's a, a, a list of all the other tasks. So all together, and some of those are pretty important tasks. There's a lot of, you know, you know, reasonably minor typical repair and replacement things that you would do over the course, over the life of a building. But also, um, what, a couple of the bigger items was a vent. So a fan for evidence, um, the officers have to go in and uh, Chief, you can speak to that later, but more or less some of these are requirements, you know, they're not just nice to have. There are things that we should have always had and, and we should have now, uh, assuming we continue using this building for any time. And the other large one that we do not have a cost on right now is the, uh, the bathroom. So separating that into a private, uh, private use or unisex, whether it's one shower stall and changing area or two shower stalls and chair, uh, changing areas, that has not been cost estimated yet. We don't have a quote on that yet. So that's one of the other big ones. But all in all, they, the belief is that that whole list of improvements will be roughly in that two hundred and eight thousand dollar area. So again, if it's, if it's a number plus a number, then there's belief that there's, there's sufficient funds to complete that list of projects and those things that are required. I know that's a weird summary. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, thanks. First, thanks, Sean. I appreciate the, the summary. And, uh, I, I don't know, has, if, if everyone's had a chance to look at these additional prod, the list of additional projects recommended. But, uh, these don't, these aren't a frivolous type, types of things. These are basic, to me, some very basic necessities, some very common sense, uh, types of things. Windows that, that don't, don't open are, and, and are old fashioned besides. I mean, we need windows that can, you know, not only provide ventilation, but also, you know, preventually provide a, uh, you know, an exit in case of, uh, in case of fire, uh, overhead lighting. That, that's a, that's a big deal. Lighting is a really big deal as far as productivity, as far as morale is concerned. Getting good lighting in a place, uh, is, you know, is, is a major need as far as I'm concerned. Let's see, ventilation, while processing evidence used for, you know, using solvents for the arms equipment, you know, to me, that sounds like a, you know, a necessity. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but, but really to, to me, these are, these are very basic needs. Many of them, you know, are in the one thousand, two thousand dollar range, not, uh, not a big deal, although they all add up. And Sean said, uh, the thing that Amy mentioned, uh, earlier, which is a big deal. I think it is, it is a necessity, not a nice to have, but, uh, you know, unisex locker rooms. And, uh, I, I agree, we absolutely need, uh, need that. So, you know, my thought is since the budget is already there and granted, we could use it for something else, but we have already budgeted this. Now we have this additional grant. Uh, I would like to see us, you know, approve the whole list, list, including the additional projects. That's it. Thank you.
So quick question, Councilmember Schaefer, are you hoping that council will suspend the rolls to move forward this evening?
Uh, that, that would, that would be my hope, although I wasn't actually counting on that. I was just basically stating my, uh, my view of, uh, of the additional items.
Okay. We're, we're getting to the past the nine o'clock hour. So that's why I put that out there quickly. Um, Councilmember Langill?
Um, yeah, I'm just going to get right to this. The, the kind of information council gets on projects is specific to the public work construction budgets. They are not total development cost budgets. And I have a very hard time approving development projects that don't have all of the costs associated with the project. What does that mean specifically? What that means is we need to know what is the design cost? We need to know what other additional costs are associated with the planning-related functions. I'll give you an example, might not apply to this building, but in some roofs can have asbestos. Um, it's not uncommon to find it in roof tiles. So sometimes you have to have a roof tested. And so there is a lab fee that would be in the budget. Another thing that would be in the budget is staff time. Now, that isn't part of your grant source likely, but you would still know what the staffing implication is for staff time. Would any of the work be done in-house? We would get a number for that. You would have all of the information in a total development cost budget. And quite honestly, I am been mystified by why we don't present that kind of information to council. It gives us a complete picture of what we're doing with a project. And the difficulty of getting information incrementally is you never get that whole, whole picture. So I, I don't have a problem doing more work on the police department building. I've walked that building. I wouldn't be a bit surprised if the floor situations ends up being even more complicated than what we know of now. Um, but I really would like to see budgets that have all the costs listed out. That way council knows exactly what we need to set aside. And, and we can move forward. I bring this up on this project because it's something I know we all want to do. And so we, it's a good opportunity to do a complete picture of the project. There's nothing wrong with what Sean presented, but if we're going to, um, effectively allocate more money to the project, I want to know that we've allocated money for all of the activity associated with completing the project. And, um, honestly, in all the years I've worked with grants, development, we always have a total development cost budget. And I feel certain the public works knows what the total development cost is associated with the project. And I would like to know that at the council level. It doesn't mean we have to approve it. Uh, we approve these agenda bills incrementally, but I think for informational purposes, we should know what the total development cost is.
Thank you. Any other council members want to speak? Councilmember Napland?
Yeah, I had a similar concern that it, it didn't seem like there was any, uh, associated design costs or even staffing relocation temporarily for some of these projects. It, it seems like it could get, get pretty big. And I, I'm not really sure. There's an awful lot of small projects to be coordinated potentially. And I don't know, do we have the staffing to oversee this, this greatly expanded scope? And are we engaging with ARC, who we have hired and invested a lot of money to help us come up with solutions for our, um, for housing our staff? And I, I'd really like to know that there was a consultation with ARC for, um, just the space planning and potentially design help to make sure that this solution is, um, you know, a long-term solution, not forever solution, but, uh, an appropriate solution that will get us to the next phase.
Mayor, Mayor?
Absolutely.
So, uh, as to the best of my understanding, again, and I haven't been deeply involved in this project, this started all out as a maintenance project. So this started out as a reasonably simple, uh, flooring replacement. And then as walkthroughs continued and staff consultations were going on, of course, that grew into, well, you know, but this thing's also Flooring replacement. And then as walkthroughs continued and staff consultations were going on, of course, that grew into well, you know, but this thing's also messed up. And so is this thing and this thing, this thing. So. I think you're correct. There was no funding for design. That was not how this project was envisioned. That's not how it's programmed. It was programmed to be a reasonably simple. You know, small works job and even in its current state, the, again, the recommendation that we're asking for is. What we would do is move forward and develop a scope of work, a complete scope of work. So we would take all this stuff and that's something within staff ability and it's within our. It's within our, you know, plan. But again, we would do all the scope of work similar to what we've done with lots of other projects and we'd combine this because we're not going to bid out twenty separate projects or ten or, or five or six. This should be one project with a general. I think that it's simple enough. There shouldn't really be any design work unless there's something really important. Now, I know a lot of has spent a good deal of time meeting with a lot of different contractors for each of these different disciplines. So there's a pretty reasonable understanding of what the problems are and what we, what the solutions are for those. Um, I'm not aware of any other. Estimates being available at all. This is the only paper I have as well as the same paper you have. But again, I think it's just a function of the way that this thing has morphed and grown. And then you throw in a different funding source. And it kind of also, you know, spurs other, other movements. So. I guess to answer both of those questions as best I can, no ARC has not been involved or contacted because again, this hasn't been seen as a. Anything other than maintenance. And I understand that's how it began, was a maintenance activity rather than a growth or. Different accommodation. So it's more of how do you put back what's going on right now and make it, uh, livable for the folks in it currently? I hope that helps.
Great. Uh, Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I support, um. This agenda bill and you know, I don't know whether it needs to be done tonight or in the future, and I respect if other council members need more time or have more questions, um, to ask, but. I see these all as essential and I, I'm definitely okay with moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet? Mayor Protem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just wanted to bring you into the conversation. Um, I saw the entire list. I didn't see anything that, uh. I didn't think was, uh, not necessary or important. Uh, one that we haven't really talked about or just briefly touched on was, uh. And this is the way it works. One of the officers that processes evidence said, gee, we use solvents and we're in here breathing it. Shouldn't we have a hood that ventilates this room? I have no doubt that Ellen I would shut us down in a heartbeat if we didn't have a hood in there. So those are the kind of things I see adding. So Chief, I just want to check with you. To confirm that you support, um, the items on this list and would encourage us to move forward with them.
Important. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I've been in consultation with Alana on, uh, this project as it's moved forward and. Most of the items did, um, come up as we were doing our walkthroughs and, and talking with the officers and. Some of the furniture that we had in that building, we got used back in two thousand and four. So it's, it's had its life cycle. So. A lot of that stuff in there is, uh, just those types of items that need to be replaced or, uh, repurposed. And I do support the list as it currently stands.
Thank you. And Councilmember Bridnicki.
I, I have no problem with the list. I, I do support, uh, moving forward with that as well. And, you know. I remember when that, uh, police department was built and it was intended to be temporary. So the fact that we're already this far into it and it's still standing is. Remarkable. So yes, I do support that.
Thank you. Anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak? We haven't heard from Councilmember Hoag. And if you don't want to speak, that's okay. I just want to make sure that everyone's provided an opportunity. Go ahead.
I guess my question would be timelines. Do we have to approve it tonight or can it?
No. Okay, this, this is a first touch. Um, uh, Councilmember Shaffer was a pretty, um, vocal about the project. So, um, in the support. So I was trying to. Move along the conversation so that if folks wanted to, um, suspend the rules and approve tonight, you could and just kind of get that in folks minds. But it sounded like people wanted more discussion. Um, so you can either continue discussion, you can vote on it, or you can wait until the next meeting. It's all up to you.
The only thing for staff, it would be nice for us to know if, if we can move forward in developing this as far as like a scope of work and a, a bid type document. Whether there's support for that. Again, we're not going to have a number. We're not going to have a contract. But further development in this month before the next meeting, that it'd be nice to know if we are to do that or not to do that.
So what I've heard, um, from the group is that we have at least, um. Five people that are ready to, to move forward. It looks like at the next meeting. Um, so I would say that yes, you've got support for that, uh, but folks still have ongoing questions. That the director will probably need to, um, answer over the next few weeks. Councilmember Lingle, you had your hand up.
Yeah, let me just say this. I think you're probably going to need more money for the project to do it correctly. Um, one of the things in particular you might want to check in on is, you know, the governor has a lot of new, um, goals. Or requirements for, um, the coal carbon footprint issue. Um, there's going to be a lot more stuff like that that. Potentially is kicking in from the last legislative session. I think you'll need more money for the project. That doesn't mean I wouldn't support the project. I want to be really clear about that, but that's part of why I'd like to see a total development cost budget so that we can be sure when we do the project. We're doing everything we need to do. And if that means we need more furniture, we've got that. If we need to have somebody come in and design spaces, write specifications. That's budgeted and, um, that we do, do the whole thing, uh, and do it so that we don't have to worry about the building for a while. So how's that? Councilmember saying you're probably going to need more money. I think I've said that actually before, but I'll say it a couple of times more probably in the next couple of months.
We still have more items, so.
I know, I know. That's, that I, I know that's why I commented on the CIP and the budget process the way I did.
All right. Uh, Mayor Protem and then Councilmember Shaffer.
Thank you, Mayor. I came actually prepared to maybe recommend we vote just so we can get moving on a lot of this stuff because I know it takes a long time. But I can see that there are questions. Um, Sean, uh, Chief, what do you need from us? Uh, here you've got your city council. Uh, there's a, uh, you know. Agenda bill laid out. What are your timelines? What do you need from us? So you know, you heard we had like maybe a little more information, kind of that total cost. You know. What do you need from us?
For me, I think, I think that there's enough here for us to move forward. It's going to take us some time. It'll take staff some time to put together a document that combines all this and makes it make sense. And into some sort of a work plan on our own. So I think this is enough for us to move it, move the ball forward a little bit more and we won't be ready to advertise before the next meeting unlikely. But we can come back and talk about it and show you the progress where we're at then. I think that's reasonable. Uh, the only thing that we're pushing up, but you guys already, already did that with the roof. So the roof is already moving. So that's our, that was our time critical element. So.
Thank you, Mr. Tozer. Mr. Shaffer.
Yeah, per, uh, Councilmember Lingle's concerned. Yeah, it would be nice to see a full, full cost on this. She thought of things that I didn't think of previously. Like, you know, there is a cost of, of the temporary housing, right? For the, uh, for the officers. We definitely want to include that. If there's no design cost, like you say, Sean, let's specifically say that, you know, no, no additional design cost, just to make it clear. So, so, you know, we're not, we don't have to worry about that in the future. And, uh, Councilmember Lingle, with, you know, with your experience of those other costs you think might not be accounted for, it'd be good to spell those out maybe in an email to, you know, Sean and Steve. You know, I don't know what else you might, you might have in, you know, in mind for that, but, but we certainly want, want to make, make sure we understand those.
Thank you. All right. Um, so if there's nothing further on this item, we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business. We'll start with the first agenda item that was pulled from the consent agenda, agenda bill twenty-one dash seventy-four A consultant services contract. Preliminary feasibility, design concepts and community input for the expansion of Big Rock Ballfields. Mr. Tozer.
Good evening, Mayor Council. It's me again. Uh, so again, this item was, I'll be really brief. I'll try to be really brief. This was on the consent agenda initially. Again, this is a contract that you guys have discussed. Uh, it's part of our agreement with Little League, or I think there was agreement in principle at least. So Little League has some money that was provided to them from King County for, um, investigation of development of sports fields in the county. It became a partner with the city because we happen to have a property that could use some development. And then we have this cooperative agreement. So, uh, staff with in cooperation with Little League, we researched the MRSC list, the appropriate roster. I can't remember the name of the specific list we did, but again, we sort of pre-selected reviewing SOQs together in the conference room. We selected five and then using some of the newer procedures of, for procurement that the city is in development of, uh, we sent a solicitation to each of those five. Consultants. And so we asked, we told them that, hey, we're looking at you. We're interested in what you got and here's what our project details are. So they gave them an outline of, of what our parameters were, what we were looking for, um, and then provide them an opportunity to reply. All five of those consultants did reply. They each provided a tailored. SOQ back to us and then we sat together and ranked those. Let's see here. We ranked those to separately, completely independently. Then we came back and scored them. I put the little score here just because it's fun. But again, it's just part of our process. This is something we do pretty typically. So we write numbers and everybody gets numbers. So it really doesn't matter what it is. And then we see what, who has the high number, the low number. In this case, it was low number wins. Uh, because of the ranking. So, and then that also can help you indicate if you have a preference for a top or a preference for a low, that sort of thing. So. Again, I think I find these kind of instructive and they help really, really show how people got to where they are. Um, again, Bruce Dees and Associates was selected for this work. They, I put this picture Perrigo Park in here. So this in, in Redmond, if you guys are familiar, I'm sure many have been there. It's something that stuck out to I think all of us really because it has a lot of similar characteristics with some real constraints, some sensitive area adjacent and a good mix of uses. So. That is it in a nutshell. But what we're asking to move forward with is a consultant agreement for twenty-five thousand dollars to, uh, do the preliminary site feasibility. A lot of this is going to be focused on. Looking at the tree assessments and existing survey data to find our boundaries. So where's our? Go and no-go zones and what are our even possibilities on this site? And then hopefully a few conceptuals. We're not going to be able to get as much into the public involvement in this. At this point right now, because again, we need to know what we're asking them to provide input on. So. We don't want to say, hey, here's ten acres, build it and really only two or three are usable. Uh, we need to define those parameters a little better. So.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tozer. Would anyone like to make a motion on this? Actually, uh, it is first touch, so we will need to suspend the rules first. Councilmember Lingle.
Make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lingle and a second by Mayor Protem Remington to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Would someone like to make a motion on agenda bill twenty-one dash seventy-four A?
I move that we approve agenda bill twenty-four dash, wait, was it twenty?
Twenty-one dash seventy-four.
Forty-eight.
Second, Lingle. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoag and a second by Councilmember Lingle to approve agenda bill twenty-one dash seventy-four A. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, I just had this pulled from the consent so that I could abstain from voting for personal reasons.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridnicki.
So I'm excited that they're going to do evaluation on our trees and sensitive areas. So my only question is. Is the preliminary design activities for the property. Is that for multiple ideas coming forward to present to the public? So not just. A ball field, but many other options, right?
Correct. Yeah. So the, the biggest task is going to be finding the space that's usable. And then it's going to be. Round peg square hole type thing and, and what fits where and what type of use is that? And how can we maximize it? So we've already had some discussion with them about, you know, passive use trails and things like that. So yes, it'll, a range of options. And integration into the existing site is also part of it.
Including parking?
Yes, we're also aware of that.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. All right, um, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and with that, I will need a motion to extend our meeting past nine thirty.
Mayor Mike Remington, I move that we extend our meeting past nine thirty.
Do you have a second?
Second, Shaffer.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Protem Remington and a second by Councilmember Shaffer to extend our meeting beyond nine thirty. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, I would actually request a two-minute break so that we can all take a quick restroom break. Um, we've been at this for. Four hours now, and I think many of us, uh, are needing that. So we'll go to recess for two minutes and resume. Actually, I'll just say resume at nine thirty.
Don't we need a motion for that?
No, no, we don't.
Mayor, thank you for that, uh, refreshment and restroom break.
Yeah, I didn't get my water refills, but I definitely couldn't make it through the rest of the meeting without a bathroom break.
Thank you.
It's a bio break.
Yes.
It's a little, getting really hot in this corner of my house. I had to open windows on both sides now because I'm dying.
Our, our house was very humid today. Um, it, it was humid outside this morning for sure when I went for my walk.
We had measurable rain in Monroe. Like one, one hundredth of an inch or something.
It's something.
I'm going to have to talk softly because my husband is going to sleep now. I'm in the room right next to him because my son is using the other room for Xboxing. It's kind of a dilemma having to zoom in your home.
And my husband can't go to sleep until our meeting's over, uh, since my dad is in our, in my room.
So you hear me talking in hushed tones, that's why.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like we have just two more items. Am I missing a page?
We we have Agenda Bill 21-75A that was pulled from the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. As well as three items of unfinished business.
Is like, is this going to be going on to like 11:00 or something?
Hopefully not.
Because because I have an appointment at 10:30 with a student.
Yeah.
She's actually waited waited for me because I said I won't be finished till about 10:30.
I have a field meeting at 7:30 tomorrow morning.
All right. So we almost, we're just waiting for councilmember Hoag and councilmember McHenry. We have her back. All right, we've got everyone. So we'll resume the meeting and move on to Agenda Bill 21-75A. I'll just restate that we're moving on to Agenda Bill 21-75A, our contract for water system telemetry and controls. And this is a first touch. So Mr. Tozer.
Good evening, Mayor City Council, Sean Tozer, Public Works Project Manager. So again, I have a slide for this. As one does. So in your packets, I can't navigate to that at the same time. But in the packet, there's you should have the Agenda Bill, sample contract, and then the the SCADA master plan and their proposal. I think there's a bunch of items in there. But again, the SCADA and telemetry system provides its supervisory control and data acquisition or something like that. That's what SCADA stands for. But more or less, it's it's a partially remote and automated system that helps us manage that helps you manage a water utility system or these other complex complex businesses, I suppose. So specifically for us, this is a completely new system. So long story from long ago, our old system that used to be there doesn't work, and it hasn't worked for a long time. And they've spent many, many years trying to make it work and trying to fix things and trying to find out what was wrong and then fix those things. But we just never found the right folks that made it work. So it was time to stop trying to make what used to once work, work again and put something else in. So that is what we endeavored to go after. That is what we did in the development of the SCADA master plan. Again, this is has been a CIP project in our previous comp plan in 2012. And then this one in 2020, 2019, whatever year we're going to sign it. Again, high priority project because it is pretty vital to the operation of our system. This this particular system and what we have asked for provides us with generally remote access, so viewing ability. So it'll help with some troubleshooting. We could look into a zone perhaps and see if a particular zone is is acting in a silly way or a funny way. We will have some limited control ability, and and we don't mind having it remain limited for right now. Because again, there are also other risks with cyber attacks and other hacking and things like that where we don't want to lose control of our system. So having too much actual control function is not something we're super interested at the moment, but we want to build in some of that capability. Again, the so part of the this particular project is it was written with that master plan. It's a very specialized service. You know, this isn't something you can just necessarily bid out to a low bid on the public works contract. This is very intellectual based. There's a lot of data, equipment, telecommunications, software programming. It's very, it's a very interesting project to bid. So we followed a process through RCW. We did an RFP. We provided an opportunity for any any vendor to bid it, providing them all of the things they would need to require or need to provide. We received one bid again, or one proposal back from the folks who had to develop the SCADA master plan. Again, this is not something we were super surprised about because it's a very specialty item. But again, following process and procedure. Part of what we did and what's in the Agenda Bill is this 20% contingency. And again, that is something that we had put originally in our RFP, understanding we could get a range of of consultants with a range of different knowledge of what we had and what was going on. And in those final negotiations, not wanting to have a variation exceed a certain amount. There's also a bit of this for understanding that we're going to have, you know, opportunity costs. We're going to have some things that are going to make sense to us as we move forward to add into it. And so understanding there's, as we talked about earlier, these these projects grow right as you get into them. So that is also part of the reason for the contingency. And I think that is the highlights of it. But again, more or less, this is a contract. Oh, shoot, I think we're asking for approval of the contract. I don't have the Agenda Bill in front of me.
Yes, Mr. Tozer, it was on consent agenda via approval of the mayor for 10. And so I'm happy to entertain any council questions. But the Public Works Department would certainly appreciate approval of this this evening. Councilmember Napland.
Yeah, so the reason I had this pulled off consent is and requested to have it be pulled off consent is I was a little bit confused about how the Agenda Bill was structured. Because it looks like all we're doing is approving a contract. And within the contract, clearly, it doesn't talk about the city being pre-approved to authorize 20% over. So I wasn't really sure what we were approving, because like I said, there's nothing in approving the contract that is specifying we're preapproving 20% overage. And then I also, it it sounds like as the project goes along, you'll discover that maybe some additional things you'll want to do or this or that. And so I I feel a little bit concerned about pre-authorizing such a significant overage when it sounds like, once you get through some of the initial part of the project, you should have a better idea of if it's going to get over. So I don't see this as like being some kind of an emergency to where you'll need super rapid response. I I don't know, I I just haven't really seen an Agenda Bill that kind of in the fine print talks about going 20% over and wanting preauthorization. I I just hadn't seen something structured. So I I wasn't clear on what we were approving.
Yes, and and my understanding is the intent and and how it was talked about with Steve was that he was he was trying to program in that additional authority to to be able to run over that amount. I think that's, as you mentioned, this isn't even a road project where we're in the field and I have people waiting on a decision. This is something that we might be able to take a little time. I think what's what we what I would definitely like to see is that the project budget includes a 20% authority. Not necessarily the contract budget. You see, because we can still do change orders for 20% or 20K within the mayor's authority as long as it's budgeted. And so changing the project budget from 386, which is our contract already and and programming in some of that overage would be useful to us at a minimum.
So are we actually making a budget amendment as part of this? It's not in the the agenda, what you would read to say I'm approving this contract as the Agenda Bill. It doesn't talk about approving a budget amendment. So I don't know, I I'm just a little bit confused legally what we're doing.
In the I know in the expenditure amount in the table on the second page, that's where that's reflected. There was a couple of different hands in writing this. And so I don't know exactly what the how to how to make it happen. But I know that that's how it's reflected in the in the cost table is is showing the amendment needed is $75,800.
Councilmember Schaefer.
I'm anyway, I was going to I guess ask and or point out that the $75,800 was the 20%. The correct Sean, I don't want to. Okay. And so the total budget being requested is 463, but specifically what's being requested is the, you know, the budget amendment of the $75,800, which is the 20%.
And to be clear, you know, we're not doing the formal budget amendment right now. That happens in the mid-biennial budget process. This is just acknowledgement and authorization of that 20% contingency.
Exactly, yeah.
Because I don't I don't know that that Public Works could get a contract signed with the consultant if the 20% contingency isn't in the contract. That would be a huge risk for the contractor, I would believe. Anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Lingle. You're unmute, councilmember.
See, I'm trying to be quiet here. I'm I'm I've got my budget book in front of me. What was our original estimate for the telemetry? In the budget?
I think it was 386. It was like on the.
It was 386?
386 or 388 in the budget.
Okay, oh, I think I found it.
Some of those numbers are blending in, but and I think it's in the Agenda Bill. It should say.
Yes, 386. Well, you've got the 20% in there. I'm I'm looking all the way back.
So councilmember in the Agenda Bill in the financial section, it shows what's budgeted versus the total budget needed and the amended budget. What would the result be during the mid-biennium?
So is that that's let that's listed as the wait a second here. I see, I I've got too many pieces of paper that now I've got to go back and forth between, since this got moved on the agenda. You know what I mean? I have to go back up to the Agenda Bill, which is kind of a hassle here.
Well, councilmembers Lingles doing that, is there anyone else that has questions or would like to speak to this?
Why is that not taking me?
Councilmember McHenry.
I don't have anything earth shattering, just wanted to say that I support.
Want to take me there.
Didn't see you in there.
Thank you.
Yeah, the I found it, 388. And we were funding it out all out of the Water CIP, right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just checking them off my list. One makes sure I stay central centered here. Okay.
Councilmember Napland.
I think what's hard for me is normally, this is somewhat of a public works, but also has an engineering component potential. I think is where we're tricky here. And I I'm just used to, you know, a contract being somewhat firm. So this feels a little odd that the cost could change for hardware components. Like, I I it just kind of is bizarre to me that they wouldn't have that figured out. But it I don't know, maybe it's because it's more an engineering and implementation in the same thing. It just seems a little bit odd that there's so many unknowns and that there'd be such a large contingency. But I I'm totally in support of the project. I it's just item after item, every single thing is going over budget. We're spending more for everything, every single thing.
So to be clear, this.
A little difficult.
So to be clear, this is not going over budget. We have a budget, the 20% contingency is if something happens. If something's found, you have you have equipment here that is, you know, tech related. Everything is very hard to get right now. And so we don't know, and nor can I think the consultants estimate what the actual cost of that equipment is going to be and what they find. So, you know, this is not, this is not uncommon. Used cars, I'll give a prime example. Our four-year-old Ford truck that was a base model version is now worth significantly more than we paid for it. There is a shortage of supplies, parts, computer chips, appliances, you name it right now. And not only is it very difficult to get them, simple items like paddleboards and canoes have doubled in price over the last year. And that's just something that's not even electronically related. So that I do not see this as something that is unexpected based on the environment that we are in worldwide as far as availability of product.
Yeah, I see.
Did you find it, councilmember Lingle?
Oh, yeah, I'm just going back through the I just get lining everything up so I can, I I think it, I think I've found it now.
Councilmember Brinicky.
Um, I I think, you know, when it comes to all these projects and bidding it again, and you're right, this environment is really interesting. I just finished a kitchen remodel and I could not believe how the products that I like knobs, door, door handles went up. Like, I would say, you know, they started at 10 and so many months, like a month and a half later, they were at $25 per handle. And so I'm finding that with art supplies, even labor costs. I'm trying to hire people now, and I can't believe what they want to start at for for me to hire them to do graphics now. It's I don't know. So I understand how you, you know, when you're bidding these things out and the current times. At one point, I I've worked through a recession. I've never worked through this kind of situation where I've seen prices go as crazy as it has gone. So.
And this is expected in government and private business as well as personal business. Councilmember Lingle, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead.
No, I'm fine. I I've got my, I've got everything all lined up now.
So are did.
I have my butt.
Were you?
No, I'm good.
Okay, okay.
No, I'm fine now. I have everything all lined up, so I'm good.
Okay. So I guess the remaining question is, does council want to suspend the rules and vote on this this evening? Or did you want to wait three weeks until the next meeting? Councilmember Hoag.
So I I still had a little bit to discuss about this. And I'm wondering if council should, and maybe this is something for the finance committee. I I feel like we should come up with like a standard contingency overage. So we're not debating this with every project because it it is something that we could expect. But I just, and then I also feel like things that are put on the consent, maybe they shouldn't be things that are first touch that we've never discussed. Especially if they've got overages or amendments to the budget in there. That's just how I'm feeling looking at this. But those are just some more broad discussions about it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cotton, do you have any any words of wisdom on contingencies? I see you looking thoughtful, and I thought you may have something to add with your 30-plus years' experience.
Well, sure, I I don't know a lot about the specifics, so I can't really speak to it specifically. But typical contingency is 10%. And as the project continues, sometimes that's reduced to 5%. And usually those funds are withheld, you know, there's billing every month or two weeks, whatever they they have. And those 10% are withheld until the end. Sometimes it goes down to 5% per billing, as I mentioned. And then there's a true-up at the end where there's, you know, a review of all the paperwork. You know, what what was the contractor's cost? What was the markup, you know, projected? How did, you know, you measure measurements? You know, there's a way to them reconcile and and then then make the payment. And it's it's fair for all concerned. That's that's best practice.
Okay, thank you. So I'm needing direction from council on what you want to do with this item this evening. Because we do have actually, at the end of our agenda, a meeting issue that needs to get resolved tonight. Mayor Portem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. I do take full responsibility for putting this on the agenda. We did have a chance at Public Works to talk about it. We went through the project, the importance, had a lot of questions for both Director Lenishewski and project manager Sean Tozer. And with that, it seemed like a very good project, even those that have questions, sounds like, you know, you support the project. The real reason it was pulled tonight was the 20%. Sean, I I don't know if you can help. I I don't remember every last bit of our conversation. Steve mentioned he was going to ask for 20%. I think what I remember hearing was it's a very complex system. We have older equipment, we have newer equipment. There are some telemetry issues, getting it to fit in both software and hardware. There were a lot of unknowns. You know, Steve knows that we don't like to go coming back and saying, hey, we need more money. And so I think he felt in just in all honesty that we might need up to that. Now he hopes he doesn't need any of it. And I agree with Mr. Cotton that 10% is is normal. So I think if we were talking 10%, maybe it wouldn't be as big a concern. So that seems to be that extra 10%. So that seems to be that extra ten percent, the, the question. Um, I, uh, having been a water system operator for twenty years, certified by the state, uh, and worked with older systems, uh, I can guarantee that things come up. It seems like every time you touch them, it's just like, uh, Councilmember Napland said, how come everything costs more? Even your best estimate is like, are you kidding me? My personal life seems to be that way. Every time I go to get something repaired, it's like, seriously? You know, uh, I just figured I was old-fashioned. So I get the concern. Uh, I think moving forward with this telemetry project, especially there's a lot of safety involved here. Uh, the monitoring, uh, of the system, um, helps improve the safety and security. I asked Steve directly about security and there are some security pieces to this as well. So I think it's, you know, I encourage us to move forward with the project. I, I get the concern on the dollar amount. You know, if, if we said we'll do it, but only with ten percent, w- we run some risk potentially that if it goes over it, th- they just have to come back and ask us for more. And I think they'd like to avoid that if they can. I think Director Lenishewski was just being really upfront. There's some unknowns here, even for the vendor. So we're just looking for that cushion, um, and doing it right up front. Uh, I'd always like to have guarantees on costs where I can. This one is such a big project and fairly complex that, uh, I think the vendor, a- as Sean said, they're looking for some buffer so they don't get themselves in trouble either. So I, I would encourage us as council to move this forward. I fully understand the, the concern about the cost and the twenty percent. But I think it's a great project. I, I think that it's time to move forward. Uh, I always ask myself, am I willing to spend that extra seventy-five thousand if necessary? You know, and that's an important question that only individual councilmembers can ask. Uh, maybe it's no. Uh, for me, it's yes. I, I, uh, sometimes I'm surprised what I know about water systems that it didn't actually cost a lot more than that, um, because of the complexity of these systems and the safety involved. Uh, something goes wrong with their system and somebody gets injured or ill because their monitoring play, take place. Now, as Mercer Island found out, you know, front page of the Seattle Times when things went wrong, and this one's going to improve our safety for every citizen that drinks water. So anyway, I, I don't want to overstate it, but I don't want to understate it. And I would encourage us to move forward tonight and, uh, suspend our rules and approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are you making a motion, Mayor Protam, or are you waiting?
Uh, I, I see Councilmember Brunicki has a, a hand up to mayor. I, I really want all councilmembers to weigh in.
Right, thank you, councilmember Brunicki.
Thank you. I'd concur with, um, Mayor Protam Remington. Uh, they, our, our water and our safety is a priority. It's critical. So I think I'm definitely supportive of moving it forward.
Thank you, councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, just want to concur really well stated by Mayor Protam Remington, but I do think some good concerns are brought up. Um, councilmember Hoag, I don't think it's reasonable to think that we'll resolve those before getting this approved and moving this forward, but I would hope that we can, you know, assign that work to the right committees and keep making progress on all the stuff we're working on right now. Um, but again, I support moving this forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, it sounds like folks are probably, the majority are red, is ready to move forward, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion to suspend the rules. Mayor Protam?
I've moved that we suspend our rules in preparation for approving this agenda bill.
Second, McHenry.
We have a motion by Mayor Protam Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry to suspend our rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, with that, uh, would someone like to make a motion on Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventy-five A? Mayor Protam?
Mayor Mike Remington, I moved the council approved Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventy-five A, Contract Water System Telemetry and Controls.
Second, McHenry.
Right, we have a motion by Mayor Protam Remington and a second by Councilmember McHenry. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, thank you. Um, this, uh, just kind of a, a point of information, this project has been in the works for fifteen years. So this is a huge achievement to, uh, get it going and get this contract approved, to get this important work done. So thank you, um, for that approval. And this is one more example of um, what happens when things don't get done in a timely manner. You, we get put up against these walls, um, and we need to get things done. So thank you for that. Um, moving on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill twenty-one dash seventy-B, Ordinance Amending Duval Municipal Code two-point-oh-three, City Administrator, and, uh, for discussion and, uh, preferably decision, Mr. Cotton. You're on mute. I, I think we're all getting out of practice as we start to return to small in-person meetings.
I'm muted. All right. So, uh, you don't see the code on the screen, um, but this is just follow-up from the last agenda item and I just wanted to, to flash it for you. We don't have to decide, uh, obviously this tonight, especially given the lateness of the hour. But this is a fringe benefit list that's pertinent to the city administrator. It's a draft. And, um, you, the, 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 there's a lot of standard things here that all city employees relate, ooh, how do you do that? Um, but then there's.
We're not seeing, we're not seeing your screen?
You're not?
No.
Oh, so I, I see it. It just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you for that support. Let's try to get there. Let's see if we can include the mayor. That's important. All right, how's that?
Now I can see it.
All right, uh, so a lot of standard things here. The green is, uh, Dana helped put this together with her staff. Um, I, you know, she just added the right words. Um, but there's nothing too extreme here in the first couple, or nothing's extreme period. But, um, I do, I do want to say that over time, like the next couple of times we meet, I would like to talk about a car allowance, where council is on this. It's pretty standard. Um, so I say to, to be determined, a moving allowance if someone is coming from a distance, that's pretty standard. That's taxable to be determined. Housing allowance is not very standard. But given the market, I can attest to that. There might be, uh, something that you might want to be thinking about. Uh, let's see. Um, it's pretty standard that there's some kind of vacation accrual. Two years is, is not unreasonable, sometimes three, because people are leaving what they've already accrued. I mentioned the ICMA Model Employment Agreement. Six months severance with six months health insurance is also, uh, pretty standard. And that's it. Um, if there's anything that anyone wants to shout out and say, absolutely not, that means, um, you know, I, I should know that. So I don't accidentally, you know, say anything to any of the candidates. Um, but we will look at this in more detail later on when we have more time. Um, but just wanted to be sure you saw what is typical. All right, I'm ready to stop sharing unless there is a question.
Mayor Protam Remington?
I just see the housing allowance scares me. I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I, I don't blame you. Um, so I did say it had to do with rental assistance. So if they have three months or six months to figure it out, you know, that's all, all you'd be talking about. It's not trying to help them buy a house. That's, that's not possible.
And for point of reference, uh, sixteen, less than sixteen hundred square foot house on my street on the tenth bigger lot just sold for seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so it's going to be very difficult for folks to, uh, live near here. Councilmember Napland?
I just wanted to share that I also, uh, uh, don't feel super comfortable about a housing allowance. I mean, if that salary isn't enough to live here, then a few months extra of housing allowance isn't going to get you there. So I, I just think that seems like kind of a bizarre perk.
So I'm ready to delete it, um, unless someone wants to speak for it.
Well, I, I think that, um, I think it needs to be on the table because if someone's moving, um, in this market, uh, Councilmember Hoag can attest with her, with her real estate experience, um, that it can take people months to find, um, a place to live. Especially if they're looking at purchasing a home. Um, we have rental, uh, units being built in Duval, uh, that are over three thousand dollars a month. Um, finding actual housing, uh, I've known many people that are having trouble finding any housing at all. Um, even rentals, um, so I think that we need to leave it on the table because if we get someone from out of state, um, when they come to, to, to see what the real situation here is, um, they may not be able to afford to live here. Um, and that would be a short term, getting someone, um, we wouldn't be able to keep that person very long. Councilmember Lingle?
Um, I just did the basic math, using the old HUD formula of thirty percent of your income. Um, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, which I, I know is the midpoint, that means they have roughly, and roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars a month to find a place to live with on an interim basis. So to put it in a context, um, I think if you were, you know, understanding, uh, you know, there's going to be some transition time, maybe a, a family subsequently moving. Um, you know, if you're going to do a housing allowance, I wouldn't do it for very many months. No. Because that is a pretty decent salary. It's just that our market is our market. If people don't like our market, then they probably shouldn't take the job. That's, that's, that's where we live. Um, it's just the reality of it.
Right. Mayor Protam Remington and then Councilmember Hoag and then McHenry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my suggestion, uh, Mr. Cotton, is that we not put it in a brochure or as something that we would negotiate. Um, I, I would let somebody else bring that up, uh, and then look at it in the total package. You know, if, if somebody said, hey, I'll take that job for a hundred and forty thousand a year, but I need a couple thousand month in housing. I don't know, maybe you work something out because it's a total package at the end. My last suggestion is if we're worried about a housing allowance, hire somebody from San Francisco. They'll think they're getting a bargain at your disposal.
We are going to be advertising in California. Okay, well, that's, that tells me what I need to know and thank you for, uh, that feedback and, and I'll be working, of course, uh, more with you as, as things progress. So I'm ready to share the screen and, and talk about the code language. Um, so as I do that, uh, you know, why do we need code language? Well, it's because um, there wasn't anything in the code about city administrator, and that's a pretty vulnerable spot. So here's the agenda bill. And, and you've seen this several times. Um, the two thou, two-point-oh-three-point-oh-seven elected officials ineligible. That's a change, but you're going to see the more detail. Here's all the discussion from the last time. And I, I'm sure you've probably already looked at this and, you know, what the attorney said and my comments, and then, um, what council said, of course, is on the left. Um, some of the discussion kind of reverberated around, if that's the right word. Um, to what extent the city administrator can make recommendations to the council? To what extent can the city minister propose a budget to the council? Uh, to the mayor, excuse me. Um, so state law kind of answers those questions. Um, so we, I relied a lot on the state law. And here's my write-up. Um, nevertheless, I, I do think that there's some flushing out that the ad hoc committee, working on the council procedures manual, could do to set in place what we in Duval think are best practices based on our past practices or refinements of those past practices. So I think that's, that's important and, uh, I've said it enough times, the ad hoc committee will hear me propose some language and they can actually improve on it, I'm sure, from there. And then at the retreat, a sneak preview, hopefully we all can start, uh, improving on it. So, uh, anyway, here's, here's the code language. Nothing is new except with some blue. So this deals with the budget and I'm going to come back to that because I, I showed you some language in the job description. Um, this language is, reflects precisely the job description. Human Resource Officer language, that's language precisely from the job description that I went over earlier. And the Labor Relations is precisely from the job description. Here's the elected officials are ineligible. That has to do making sure that, um, not just the council couldn't become the city administrator until after a year, but also the mayor as was suggested last time and, and readily understood, I think, by all involved. So um, the actual, you know, document is here with the warehouses. Um, but I, I think I'll just, uh, go back to any conversation we want to have on any of the items in blue. So I'll leave it there for a minute. Uh, see if there's any suggestions for amendments. Otherwise, I think I can say, um, that our city attorney recommends this language. It's consistent with what, uh, I've been able to research. And I think it would, uh, increase the likelihood of success and improvement for, uh, Duval going forward. Uh, a, what's not written here, but I think an ancillary benefit is, uh, as well as the job description, is, is the time that the mayor has had to spend. Um, I'll stop sharing. On administrative matters is, I think, probably way above the ordinary for the last, uh, so many years. And, uh, I, I think the system can best work when the administrator is doing internal business eighty percent of the time and twenty percent external. And whereas the mayor would be doing twenty percent internal and eighty percent external. And I think the, the, the pairing and the right pairing, uh, for both the council and the mayor in the, in the person selected and with that kind of understanding as to who's doing the internal, who's doing the external, can make two plus two equal eight. And that's part of what's in between the lines of all these things, in my opinion.
Any questions for Mr. Cotton? Councilmember Lingle?
I, yeah, um, I've already discussed this with the mayor, but I want to bring it up in the council meeting. Um, my feeling is perhaps I was not articulate enough to explain my concern about the interrelationship between how committees function and how that ties in with a, a, a city administrator. And it, they weren't legal questions. Uh, I understand about not directing staff. I understand, I mean, it, it seems kind of like crazy to even, you know, imagine me suggesting who should be, uh, a department director that would come to a committee meeting. I mean, I, I just can't imagine me doing that. My concern is something I've brought up to council several times in the past, and that is that um, we really haven't worked out how committees are going to work. And eventually the procedures manual will, will get updated and that will all be a good thing, but that should be a very careful, deliberate process, and I don't think that's going to happen quickly. And I frankly, I'm not sure that it should happen quickly. Um, so I, I did discuss this with the mayor the other day and, um, what she has assured me is that, uh, some type of interim memorandum can be provided, which clarifies a couple of things. When, I'll use the land use committee as an example. Because it's, it's, I think, been very efficient. Um, the county issued some draft policies. We were asked to give, um, comments on those. There were situations that were, you know, we saw language that needed to be tweaked. Uh, we asked, um, the director to make those changes. Uh, that is definitely not an inquiry. Um, it is something we have asked her to do, so that could be perceived as a direction. Um, and it, you know, perhaps this is somewhat philosophical, perhaps it's just, um, with the, will depend on the temperament of the city administrator. But in the meantime, until we have new procedures, I, I really think we need to refine how we work together. Um, many of you heard me say ambiguity has not been our friend. It has not been the administration's friend and it hasn't been council's friend and it has led to a lot of, I think, disappointment and hard feelings and I'd like to avoid that in the. I'd like to avoid that in the future. So, uh, based on what the mayor said to me, unless she wants to change her mind, which she's certainly can do. Um, she's gonna, they're gonna put together something that helps kind of give us all a little more guidance about how the committees will work because otherwise you could have a director, um, sitting there and, um, telling us we can't have something when we can or vice versa. And, um, you know, the only other alternative to that is really delays or a city administrator sitting in all the committee meetings, which seems pretty absurd. So, um, that is what I've requested and, um, and then I think on the council side, I think that after we get through our strategic session, I, I really hope that we will refine two things with committees. Number one, working on our job descriptions. So that we stay in our lanes. That's always been, uh, an area we need to work on. And then the other thing I think is we need to think about how committees uh, cross work. Because, um, public works is a good example, personnel is a good example. If you look at our procedures manual, um, there's lots of potential overlap with, say, a finance committee. So how do we communicate with each other? And, uh, so we divvy up where there's overlap in committees because that happens. You see it in Congress, you see it all over the place where people are working on similar issues, but not necessarily together. So those are my comments and with that uh, and the mayor's assurance, I can, I can support the, um, code changes.
Yes, and I will, I, I just will add to that, um, Councilmember Lingle, and I had a great conversation on Monday night. Um, and it was her idea to come up with a memo and tell council, um, defines kind of your committees, um, procedures. And so I said, you know what? I'd be happy to do that. Um, it's easy to do. Um, you know, there's pretty standard ways that committees operate. Um, from an administration perspective and so, uh, it won't be this week, but in the next couple of weeks, I'll be happy to get a memo to folks just to give kind of some guiding principles. Um, on kind of how the committees should be operating. Um, there already exists in, in procedures as to how to, how council can get a request, uh, move forward. Um, so you know, that is very clear. You go to the mayor per tem or city administrator, um, that starts the process, it gets evaluated. Um, and, uh, we won't go into more detail, but there is a, a pathway that exists. But I think to Councilmember Lingle's point, it may be helpful for the committees to have that in a memo format that ties back to those existing procedures until you guys get that worked in. So happy to do that.
I have one more comment about that is part of what got me thinking about this is I did attend the Ogden Murphy Wallace, uh, training that the mayor encouraged us all to attend. And, um, there are some specific s- slides in that presentation which are worth all of us uh, revisiting, I think, because not only does, um, council have certain things that it needs to do to support administration, there's also things that administration needs to do to support uh, council and, and part of that has to do with things like when there is an inquiry that is necessary to move things along, then administration will provide that support to council. And similarly, there's things council needs to be listening to to support the administration. So it, it is really re- worth, I think, revisiting how we support each other. And, uh, maybe we haven't all done a great job about that in the past. I'll certainly owe my, my piece of that, but um, I don't think it's in the citizens' best interest, the residents' best interest, um, that we not have a little less ambiguity.
Thank you, Council.
So I can send out that Ogden Murphy Wallace slide to everybody. Slides, they're pretty good.
All right, so we do have the, um, agenda bill on the table. If there isn't any further discussion, we're at ten fifteen. Um, I'd be happy to entertain a motion, Mayor Portem.
Uh, I'm ready to make a motion. Uh, I will comment. I really appreciate, uh, Councilmember Lingle's questions. Uh, this position is so important for our city and we want to get it right. Um, I, I encourage us to move it forward tonight because I know most administrators taking this level of responsibility, um, they want to see stuff in writing. What are the ordinances related to my job before I take it? So I think this up, updates it. It, uh, meets really a standard most administrators are used to seeing. Um, I think that the input, uh, questions that, uh, Councilmember Lingle had in the subsequent discussion between Mr. Cotton and, uh, Mr. Kenny were helpful in, in, uh, adding language that provided clarification. And in addition, I think the mayor writing a memo just helping us, uh, to understand the role of, uh, of city staff and working with us and committees will be very helpful. So with that, Mayor, I recommend, this is our second touch, so I recommend we suspend our rules in preparation for, uh, passing this agenda bill.
Second, Shaper.
Great. We have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Shaper to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on the agenda bill? Mayor Portem.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I move the council approve agenda bill twenty-one dash seven zero B ordinance amending the Duval municipal code two point zero three city administrator.
Second, Shaper.
All right, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Remington and a second by Councilmember Shaper to approve agenda bill twenty-one dash seventy B. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, so thank you, council, for all your feedback during this process and a huge thank you to uh, Mr. Cotton for all of the work and thought and research that went into making sure that we had, um, code that fits our community and, uh, is clear and unambiguous to, uh, point to Councilmember Lingle's, um, term there. So thank you very much. Uh, moving on.
Mayor, yeah, just want to, uh, acknowledge the contribution of Mr. Kenny and also Karen Sutherland.
Thank you. Um, he's not, his face isn't on screen, so, thank you, Mr. Kenny. Um, and so we'll go ahead and move on to agenda build twenty-one dash eighty-one B, complete streets grant authorization. Mr. Tozer.
Good, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Almost said good morning to you. Uh, so I'll be real, real brief on this one. Again, I have a slide bound. I don't even know that it makes any sense, but it's, uh, the Cherry Valley, so a complete streets, uh, project we're going to do. Sorry, let me restart this. So we went to a public works committee last week and discussed this project. So all three options were discussed. Ultimately, the consensus was for the Cherry Valley sidewalk, uh, project. Some of those reasons for that is just the, the, kind of the triangle of how the use with the Cherry Valley, with the elementary school, Doherty Farmstead, uh, the church and some of the, the new energy around the dog park, some of the way that, that connection could be useful for. Also, there was some discussion on some of the options about future road projects or capital or development. Uh, road diet on one fiftieth, that sort of thing. Um, uh, the grant request is being penciled in for around two hundred thousand. Some of that's a function of the, the way that particular program funds. They do these bands of funding and so we understand that their appetite for our projects is right around two hundred thousand dollars. And so that's what we would likely be approved for. Uh, again, I did a quick estimate, throwing together some numbers with two seventy-fifth and got in, into a reasonable range. Um, you know, adjusting some quantities and things like that. I got us right in that, you know, one sixty to one eighty-five range on a project similar to what we should be seeing at the end, so.
Hey, thank you. Any questions or feedback from Mr. Tozer? Councilmember Shaper.
Yeah, one, one of the reasons that I supported doing the Cherry Valley project as a priority is I really felt there was a greaty, greater safety risk, uh, in this area. Uh, traffic tends to be a little, a little faster. There's more of a blind corner, uh, coming up, uh, Cherry Valley. Uh, there's increased, there will be, there already is increased, uh, pedestrian trap, traffic, uh, due to the dog park, uh, Doherty Farms, uh, and, uh, this area is, uh, in my mind, ripe for improvement, safety improvement and the sidewalk and improved crosswalk will certainly go a long ways.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaper. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I feel the same way as Councilmember Shaper, but also wanted to add, um, Mr. Tozer touched on the road diet, um, reference. But I don't know if others don't know about that, like if there's a potential to redevelop that section of road and we do some sort of sidewalk now, how does that tie in with future redevelopment of that road and design? Like having, um, landscape strips or anything like that. So, um, that was another small component adding into what Councilmember Shaper just said.
Thank you, Councilmember McHenry. Councilmember Lingle.
I'll just put in another comment about I do really like, I'm not changing voting this evening, but I would like to see a total development cost um, budget on this because, because there'll be design, there's going to be other aspects on two seventy-fifth, we had a CIPA review. Um, so I would like to see us move in that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Naplin.
Yeah, I agree. I, I'd like a better understanding of the cost at, um, yeah, the last project we did already had the curb and gutter and it went well over two hundred thousand. And, uh, so I, I just, I have a little bit of a concern that we're, we're once again going to be asking for more money to get this project done. So any, any, uh, not that we're going to hold you to an estimate, but any type of estimate that, that takes us a little closer to reality would be helpful.
Thank you. And as a quick point of clarification, that the original estimate we had on that previous project was over a decade old and there were additional add-ons, um, that were approved to, uh, improve the project beyond the base level. Uh, that went through a public process. Um, so I do want to make that it wasn't simply a cost overrun, it was conscious decision-making uh, to have a better end project for the community. Um, any other comments on this? Seeing none, are, are folks ready to vote so that this, our crew can get the application in? Great. Councilmember McHenry.
I feel like I was looking at the review history and this might just be a second touch because I don't know report the, uh, counts, but I'll just move to suspend our rules.
All right.
Second, Shaper.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember McHenry and a second by Councilmember Shaper to suspend the rules. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and would someone like to make a motion on agenda bill twenty-one dash eighty-one B?
I move we approve agenda bill twenty-one dash eighty-one B. Um, authorizing the mayor to direct staff to apply for complete streets grant for missing, completing the missing sidewalk on Cherry Valley Road along the front edge of the historic Doherty Farmstead and Dog Park.
Second, Shaper.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember McHenry and a second by Councilmember Shaper. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, and we're almost approaching ten thirty and we have our last item of business, agenda bill twenty-one dash thirteen E. Westcott Duval Village Commercial Application Extension Request. Um, and I just want to make clear, uh, I, I should have done this a little earlier. Any staff that doesn't have any thing further on the agenda, please go ahead and go home. Um, while you are home, uh, but please go ahead and log off the meeting and, uh, get some sleep before the day tomorrow and hopefully get a couple extra hours and shut eye for the morning. So with that, um, Ms. Thomas.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I will try to be as brief as possible. I am not going to go through this agenda bill in the same way I did last time. What I will do is I will start off where we left off at our last meeting. Uh, so at our last meeting, city council directed the land use committee and staff to work on the terms based on the conversation that the council had at the last meeting. So we obviously began that process in earnest. The land use committee met um, uh, last Monday and we also had a meeting, which would have been the city attorney and myself with, um, Karik Edwards last Monday to go over, um, just where we were at to date and what we were doing moving forward and the direction that we had received and we had shared the updated um, conditioned terms, which are now in your project. As you're aware, um, the applicant does not agree with the, with the conditions that we've drafted along the way and they continue to not agree with them. In this slide, you will see it mimics the agenda bill, but just for the purpose of the public, I wanted to share it on the screen. So the yellow is new highlighted language that we worked on. Um, and then the strikeout is old language that was struck out. What we try to do is make it more to, to clarify what our terms and conditions were. So we did that work last week. Um, I will share with you and you received this email uh, late yesterday evening after I received it. Um, this is from Wes Scott and they wanted, they asked me to please share that they were in disagreement with the terms. Um, and that, uh, we would share that. So I am sharing that this evening. As you can see from, um, their requested version, essentially it um, eliminates the majority of our, our, our terms. So I will leave it at that now for council discussion, direction and approval.
Great. Council, uh, who would like to go first? Mayor Portem Remington.
Here, I was hoping to, uh, bring our city attorney, uh, Mr. Kenny in. Um, I think council, uh, had provided pretty clear direction um, in wanting to, to move forward on this item. Um, I, my question for Mr. Kenny, um, I, I've read enough correspondence and have a sense when somebody is kind of gearing up for legal action potentially. Um, and I've asked this question before, uh, and I'm not a legal expert on it, but it seems like we're in pretty good position here to, to be able to move forward have some pretty clear expectations on them. Um, you know, they've told us in the past that they thought we were in breach of the contract language. Uh, they were pretty clear verbally at one of our meetings stating that. Um, do you, you know, maybe this isn't the Brett best forum, but because we're likely going to take action, I just wanted to get your feedback. Are we in a good position to be able to move forward uh, with, you know, very short timeline on them meeting the original expectations that they start this, uh, commercial development?
Well, so, yeah, you're right that this is, um, we would probably have to go to executive session to have a frank conversation about your legal risks. Um, I will make a few comments though, short of the need to do that. Given that it's ten thirty. Um, this is their request. So they made a request of the city to grant the extension per the terms of development agreement. Their request is still on the table despite, um, a whole range of new uh, thoughts, arguments, complaints, what, however you want to describe it. Um, their, their request is still on the table. They have not withdrawn their request. Um, and so the city is moving forward in the consideration of their request per the terms of the development agreement. And they do need the extension. Um, I think that's the city's position, but it was also theirs when they made the extension request. That they need the extension request to continue forward. Um, so if we wanted to have a more nuanced risk discussion, I would recommend that we go into an executive session to do that. Um, but proceeding right now is consistent with what I think everybody has been working with and expecting to do for quite some time now.
Thank you. That answered it really clearly, uh, without going into executive session. Thank you.
Councilmember Shaper.
I, I know, uh, Daniel, I've asked this question before and I'll ask it again, I guess. I just want to be clear on what, what happens when, um, we give them this, this new timeframe, the shorter timeframe, they still have not started development, they still are not actively marketing or have any offers on the land. Once we reach that date, which I think is or have any offers on the land. Once we reach that date, which I think is June twenty twenty-two, um, what happens?
I I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the follow-on comment there. Um, but I mean, they have a requirement to commence commercial development within five years per the terms of the development agreement. And so if they well, that that those five years have come and gone.
Right.
Um, we are well into the extension period that has not yet been granted. Um, and so if they don't comply with an extension or don't get an extension, there are a range of scenarios, they they would not be in compliance with the development agreement.
And what, right. So what does that mean when they're not in compliance with development agreement? What happens at that point?
Uh, you know, I I can't tell you that because I don't know what they're gonna try to do and what position they're gonna try to take. Um, so we'll have to, and I and I know, and I fully acknowledge that doesn't answer your question, but um, I I don't know what posture the city will have to take and what remedies will be available to us uh i- until that hypothetical were to present.
No, that does answer, that does answer my question though. Thank, thank you. Because at that point, they still own the land. Right? I mean, we can't reap as well, maybe we can't, but but uh we likely can't repossess the land or anything, uh, you know, anything like that. So that's, that's why I was asking the uh asking the question. Um, you know, if nothing happens, they continue on the land, they continue to pay taxes on it, um, it continues to sit there. Uh, and of course, we don't need, you know, maybe, and then when they finally do decide to sell it, uh, well, you know, likely we'd agree to that. So even though they broke the uh original agreement, uh, there's potentially no consequences for them. And again, I don't expect, expected to answer that, Daniel. I'm just conjecturing.
Well, I I I'll just quickly add in one more point that the development agreement had terms that go both directions. Um, and so if they don't comply with their obligations, the city, again, in a separate venue, will have to assess what steps it would like to take, if any, um, because there were steps that the city took in this agreement as well. And so if they, if they fall short, but the city does not fall short, um, the city may want to consider reviewing the development agreement and seeing what steps it would like to take.
Sure. Okay, good. Thank you. And
Go ahead, Councilmember Shaffer.
Yeah, and you know, I did provide some comments on, I guess, the, my my comments on the comments from Wes Scott. And uh frankly, I think their claims and observations are incorrect or weak at very best. Like the very, the very first one talks, you know, argues that they do not have to do a market analysis, that they could just come and you know, talk about if they wanted to. Uh, no, no, I mean, the the development agreement says demonstrate the market conditions warrant an extension. Those are the exact, or close to the exact words. Uh, demonstrate, I think, is the key word in that, in that sentence. They need to demonstrate that, not shrug their shoulders and say, well, things aren't working out right now. And, you know, I won't go through all my observations, but but it continues basically on the same, in that same vein, they make very little sense. Uh and, you know, I I don't even, you know, understand. I think they're trying to uh convince us with very weak arguments to give them a longer extension.
If, if there isn't, uh, Councilmember Naplin, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I'm ready to move forward. I like the new language and when I was talking earlier about sustainability, part of the plan the city had was that we would have economic development. And so when we don't get that, um, it's a problem for everyone. And so I I hope we can get a move on on this. So I I'm willing to make a motion unless.
Right, that would be great. Please do.
I move that we my lighting is too dim. Someone else needs to make the motion. I can't read it.
Okay, I'll move that we approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash thirteen E.
Is it thirteen E or thirteen F?
It is thirteen.
I think I lost track when I was creating, because we've got this on so many agendas. So I don't think the letter itself really matters.
Okay, good, good.
The the letter is just to signify the number of touches that we've had.
Oh, okay. Anyway, second, Shaffer.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Hoag and a second by Councilmember Shaffer to approve Agenda Bill twenty-one dash thirteen E. Um, any further discussion? Oh, Clark Wyckoff.
Um, so normally, I mean, this is something that I'll discuss with council later in more detail, but the agenda bill itself does not have an actual motion language in the recommendation section. So um, unless Mr. Kenny says otherwise, I would prefer to have some motion language that is very specific to what it is that council is actually approving. Um, especially for my minutes, because if I just say that you adopted Agenda Bill, whatever, and they went back and looked at the packet, this, it, the recommendation is council discussion and final direction. So what is council's final direction? That's what the motion language needs to spell out.
Can we do that just in the uh motion itself?
Yes, so it'd be, I, you know, I move that council the land like, so I don't know if anyone has some recommended language that, and if if need be, I'll I'll share my screen with a Word doc and we can just develop it right now. I'm sorry to do this so late, but
Joey, why don't, why don't we let Daniel help us get through the motion, but the terms of the approval are within, embedded within the agenda bill?
Okay.
So, and just to clarify, that's on plate page three of that agenda bill, is that correct?
Correct.
And so I think you could just uh motion to approve and then the the blue language in the middle of that page, Wes Scott's request to defer development of commercial parcel C one with uh consistent with the terms outlined in the agenda bill.
Perfect. So um I think we'll just take a a quick withdrawal of the motion or clarification. Um Daniel, can can Councilmember Hoag simply clarify for motion?
Uh, the motion maker can do that with approval of the second.
Alright.
Right, uh approve.
Okay. Do you need to hear it again, Councilmember Hoag?
I'd like to move, well, I, I don't see it on the screen anymore, do I? I, um.
I can just say it and then if you want to say, so moved that.
That would be awesome.
Okay. An example would be, uh, I uh move to approve Wes Scott's request to defer development of commercial parcel C one consistent with the terms outlined in the agenda bill.
So moved.
Second, Shaffer.
Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Um, so thank you for what, almost two years of work on this issue. Um, to get to a final uh approval of those terms and um, having some clarity in this issue. So unless there are objections, we do not have any further business and we are adjourned. Alright, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.